Thank you for coming this evening. First up, I'd like to bring your Borough President, Gail Brewer. Your Councilmember, Bill Perkins. And your Mayor, Bill de Blasio. So before we start, I'd like to invite up Justine Monti-Dakba to come up and help us with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Danielle. So let's, I want to acknowledge some of our co-sponsors this evening. Mahan Community Board Nine Chair Padmore John, District Manager Yutha Prince. Mahan Community Board Ten Cecily Harris and District Manager Andrew LaSalle. Mahan Community Board Eleven Diane Collier Chair. Higher Harlem. The New York Urban League Young Professionals. The Pillars. And I'd like to give a special shout out to all of our NYCHA buildings and tenants who are here this evening. Thank you so much. So I'd like to invite up your State Senator Brian Benjamin to give us some brief greetings.
Good evening, Harlem. First, I'm so excited to be here. I have our Mayor, Bill de Blasio, our City Councilmember, Bill Perkins, and our Manhattan Borough President, Gail Brewer, all here, and we're all here. Now, before I was in this role, I was Chair of Community Board Number Ten. And I know there are some serious voices in this room. So I want to make sure that Harlem represents with the questions that we ask all of our elected officials. I'm happy to be here representing the state, but we have our mayor here. And welcome to Harlem, Mr. Mayor. We're happy to have you. And I'm very excited about the work you've done on ending stop and frisk and letting people know that we can have a safe city without victimizing and criminalizing our young people. So we have a lot of concerns, and I know those will come up, affordable housing. We have issues with our homeless shelters, a lot of issues. But I also want us to remember, we do have a mayor who has done some good things. So let's keep that in mind, because given what's going on nationally, let's not forget that it matters who's in office. So thank you, Mayor, for your work, and thank you to my fellow colleagues. And I just want to say hello to everyone. I am on the ninth floor of the State Office Building, Senator, old Senator Perkins' office. It's now my office, some people call and say, I'm sorry. You're right, City Councilmember. City Councilmember Perkins, old Senate office. I don't want any confusion with that. But I'm, we're here, we're here to help, and a lot of things we work on collaboratively, and we have to, in order to make this community better and to make the Village of Harlem better. But I'm excited to be here, you can find me anytime, my staff is here. And let's have a great, great town hall, three hours, let's make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Benjamin. Next up, I'd like to invite your Borough President, Gail Brewer.
Thank you very much. It is an honor to be here with the mayor and with my colleague, both currently in the City Council he is, but we had the pleasure of serving together in the City Council, and that's a big honor. And Brian Benjamin is kicking ass in the State Senate, and I'm really happy that he's here. Thank you. So there are just a couple of issues that I want to mention where the mayor has been really helpful, and so have many of you. Number one is the issue of technology, and I know that Clayton Banks is here. And Silicon Harlem is really making sure that the digital divide is being addressed in Harlem. And I want to thank Do-It and the other city agencies. And the second thing I want to mention is, as we all know, and I saw the mayor last night, we are really pleased with National Night Out. Last night, all across the city, and particularly in Harlem, there was great collaboration between the police and the community. And then the other issue that we're all concerned about, and we have a storefront office at 431 West 125th Street, with the first Borough President to have a storefront office. But it's unfortunately the challenge that the mayor and the councilmember and the State Senate and the community boards address all the time, which is the issue of housing and affordable and NYCHA and all the ways that we can preserve the rent regulation that we have. And I just want to say it's a hard issue, we have to focus on that perhaps more than anything else. I know that we've been trying to work on the homeless, and I want to thank Steve Banks, because one issue was really well addressed, I think, on 136th Street. But we need to make sure that the homeless have housing. And you know what? Thanks to the Department of Homeless Service, we know that there are 1,056 individuals who are in the homeless systems who come from Community Board Ten. So we have, we must find housing for as many of those as we can in our own neighborhood. And that's a commitment that we made. Thank you very much, and I want to thank Alden Bonilla and Athena Moore for being here from my office. Thank you very much.
Thank you Borough President Brewer. Now I'd like to invite up your Councilmember, Bill Perkins.
Thank you very much. I am, I'm happy to be back. I'm happy to be back. You know, I've started my career in public service in the City Council, and then I had a, I did some time in Albany. And it was good time, and I'm pleased that you gave me the opportunity to do that as well and be productive on that end. And I'm pleased that Brian Benjamin will now be serving time as the State Senator from this neighborhood. Give him a round of applause. I want to, if I may, take a moment to acknowledge Cordell Claire, my former Chief of Staff when I was in the City Council. And I want to thank her for all the wonderful work she did on behalf of the community and our office. And I just want to let you know that, as always, I'm available. You'll see me on the street, Assalamu alaikum, my brother, how are you? And we want, never to hesitate whether we're on the street or the subway or the bus, to stop us and say what you got to say. Try not to use too much of the language that you shouldn't be using in church. But nevertheless, we want you to feel frank and to feel as if we're accessible and that we're going to want to work with you individually as well as collectively to make this a better neighborhood. And I want to thank our mayor and, of course, our Borough President for the work that they've done and the fact that we're all working together. And that's a very, very important thing, because that way we can get things done for everybody and feel as if the community is being served the way it should be. So thank you again for re-electing me to the City Council, and I look forward to working for you as I have in the past. Thank you.
Here we go. I'm going to jump in now. Good evening, everybody. I want to thank everybody first for being here tonight. I'm just going to say a few things upfront, and then I look forward to opening up and hearing from everybody, and I know my colleagues do as well. But first, I think it's really important to reflect on what we are seeing right here. It is an August night, and hundreds and hundreds of people are not watching TV or having a nice time in the park. They're here, every one of you is here, because you care about this community, because you are stakeholders, because you believe that a lot of what we have done together matters, and a lot more has to happen. And this is a powerful exercise in democracy when hundreds of people come out to make their voices heard and to ask the tough questions and to hear for themselves what the city government is going to do for them, for all of you. So I want to thank you, because this always is affirming to me that people care and people are getting something done for their community. Please give yourselves a rounds of applause. Now, I want to just do some quick thank yous. First of all, let's thank Danielle again for the pledge of allegiance. Thank you, Danielle. I want to thank the brave and strong Brian Benjamin for going to Albany. Albany is not for the timid, my friends. Strange things happen in Albany, but you had the perseverance, the fortitude, to go and work on behalf of us. We got to work together over these last few months, and it was a great experience. Thank you for fighting so hard for Harlem and for New York City and Albany. Thank you, Senator. So Gail Brewer did not mention what Bill Perkins and I were both thinking. We were all in the City Council together, and it was an honor to serve together. And we tended to team up on a lot of things. We had progressive views, and we did not think the status quo was acceptable, and we thought things could change, and we often were able to do something about it. Gail has continued that work brilliantly as Borough President. I want you to know, just in case anyone needs reassurance, that your elected officials will go up to the mayor of this city and speak on behalf of the people. Gail is incredibly loud, Gail is forceful, Gail is persistent. I cannot get away from Gail, okay? I've got issues with Gail, because she brings the issues to me. But she does a fantastic job of it, and I want to thank you for all you do as Borough President. Bill Perkins and I have been shoulder to shoulder for years in so many things. I want to remind you that when we were first serving together, Bill achieved things that had a lasting impact on the city, like the lead paint law that protected the children of New York City from lead paint poisoning. That is an amazing achievement, and he's been building on that legacy ever since. Let's thank Bill Perkins for all he has done. So I'm honored to have this chance to be here with my colleagues. And we're going to turn to you in a minute, and then we're ready to talk about everything. But we also have a wonderful cast of characters with us from the city government. So here are the leaders of many of the most important agencies of the city government, folks who have a huge impact on the day-to-day life, your lives, your family's lives, the community's lives, right here. And obviously, all of the police leadership for the precincts representing the community, and let's thank them, because their officers have done outstanding job. Now, I have had town hall meetings all over the city, and they go well into the night. And at the end, there's always going to be people have additional issues they want to raise. I want to remind you, if your issue is not covered tonight, you still can come over and see all of these leaders of city agencies. You can talk to them directly, you can bring up an issue that's very particular to your block, whatever it is, they're here to listen. They are very accomplished public servants, they've done a great job, they're hardworking. And you may be hesitating, you may think later on in the evening, well, wait a minute, it's been a long night, is it right to keep them here? I'm telling you right now, they are so devoted that they will stay here all night if you want them to. They'll do that for you. You can just, you can, you'll see, just stick around, talk to them. But I also want to tell you, look, a quick overview. We, here's the way I look at this. We, in these last four years that we've been working together, and with these great folks who have done an amazing job, we have made some very real changes, and we never spend a day thinking there aren't 1,000 more things we have to do. But I feel very strongly that some of the things we hoped to start seeing are happening. We hoped to see the beginning of an economy with a lot more jobs and jobs that were accessible in all five boroughs and in all neighborhoods. We're seeing that now. Thank God, we have one of the lowest unemployment rates we've ever had in our city's history, and we're finding a lot of ways to get economic opportunity to many folks who were not given enough opportunity in the past. We believed that we could make fundamental changes in our school system. There is so much to do, but we found that we could do some things that had never been done before. So two easy facts, today in New York City, and I want to see, hang on, see how many people know this fact. Do you know that every middle school child in New York City is guaranteed a seat in after-school during the school year? Who knows that? Every middle school child. If you know that, raise your hand. Okay, now, this is a really well-kept secret that should not be a secret. Every middle school child in New York City, sixth, seventh, eighth grade, is now guaranteed an after-school seat. If there's a child in your life, in your family, someone you know who's not taking advantage of that, they can sign up right now for September. That's a change in our school system, another change in the one I'm particularly proud of. Literally, every four-year-old in New York City now has a guaranteed pre-K seat for free. And same thing, if you know of any parent with a four-year-old, a child's going to be four-year-old this year, sign, they can sign up right now, there's plenty of seats available. And by the way, we have started this city on the path to the same opportunity for three-year-olds. Our goal over the next few years is that every three-year-old in New York City will have early childhood education for free as well. And one more point I want to make, and I think everyone should be proud of it. A lot of people here tonight are products of our New York City public school system. How many people went to New York City Public Schools? Raise your hands, okay? How many people are parents right now of children or grandparents, parents or grandparents of children in New York City Public Schools? Okay. I want to remind you, we always have more work to do. We always have more work to do in our schools, but I want to remind you of an important fact. We have the highest graduation rate in the history of the New York City Public School System right now. 72.6% of our kids are graduating on time right now. So things are changing and improving, but there's so much work to do at the same time. And one other thing I want to say about the issue that everyone thinks about, and everyone knows we have to work on every day, which is safety for everybody in the community. We have always more work to do. We celebrated National Night Out, and I said to people, I went around the city all five boroughs, I said, "National Night Out was started in crisis 34 years ago." National Night Out was started because in neighborhoods all over this country, people felt crime was taking over. We still have work to do, but last night around the city, we were celebrating the progress we've made. And we're celebrating the fact that crime continues to go down. And I have to say, in the precincts represented here, they've seen amazing progress on reducing crime. We also know that one of the pillars to both reducing crime and improving the relationship between police and community is the neighborhood policing philosophy. The neighborhood coordinating officers are now in every precinct in this community. One more is about to get them. And that changes the very nature of the relationship between police and community, because it focuses on dialogue and people having literally person-to-person first-name relationship between officers and community residents on an ongoing basis. Not officers being moved all over the place all the time, but officers having an opportunity to build a real relationship with community residents. That's what neighborhood policing is all about, and we see already that it's having amazing impact. Here's an example. We brought the neighborhood policing philosophy here to the 28th precinct last October. Since neighborhood policing was instituted as a strategy, crime has gone down in this precinct almost 8% already. So these are examples of the changes we are making and the changes that can make a real difference. Look, there's a lot to talk about tonight. We want to talk about how we are keeping people safe, not just by fighting crime, but also through Vision Zero, because everywhere I go in the city, I hear a lot of concerns about traffic and about the horrible deaths and injuries that have occurred because of traffic in the city. And I want to go over with you, when the time comes, what we're doing about that, including in this community. There are so many other examples of the changes that we're making that have a tangible impact. Finally, look, I know tonight we're going to be talking about the issue that I hear about the most from people in all five boroughs, which is affordability. The ability to actually pay the rent, the ability to live in the neighborhood and the city you love despite the cost of living that we have seen go up and up over the years. We're going to talk tonight about all the things we are trying to do to help make this community affordable and this city affordable on an ongoing basis. It is always an uphill climb, but there's a lot that we've been able to bring to bear that's making a difference. And one thing that happened just in the last week or so, and I want to thank Councilmember Perkins, we in City Hall worked with the City Council, and we passed legislation that is one of the most progressive approaches to affordable housing anywhere in the country. It's called Right to Council, and it says a simple thing, that any New Yorker who is faced with eviction can now turn to the city and get legal assistance to stop that eviction. And anyone who makes $50,000 or less gets a lawyer for free from the city to stop the eviction. That is one example, and I have many others we'll go over as we go along, of the kinds of changes that we are making to help protect affordable housing, to protect families, to allow people to have the lives that they want to have in the city they love. So I look forward to a conversation this evening. I want to emphasize, and I know since the Borough President and the Councilmember will be moderating, I will say it, and I'm sure they'll say it too, we want to get to as many people as possible. So please, one question per person or one issue per person. We'll keep going around the room, and I look forward to this conversation very much. Thank you very much, everybody.
The gentleman right there on the white shirt.
It's good to be back, Mayor de Blasio. My question is, is since you don't support the Fair Fairs, which is a proposal that gives reduced fare metrics for low-income New Yorkers, are you going to make an agreement between the city, the state, and the MTA to pay one-third of the annual budget each for reduced fare fares? Just like for students, just like for senior citizens, and just like people with disabilities like myself? Why not?
Thank you very much for the question. The Fair Fair proposal, you said I don't support it, and I want to be very clear. I believe it's a good idea, and I also believe the MTA and the state should be paying for it. And I have a very specific reason why. At this moment, the city of New York, because of affordable housing crisis, because of the changes we have to make in education, because of everything we're trying to do to improve policing, these are all our sole responsibilities, 100% responsibilities of the city to make those changes and to come up with the resources to address those challenges. The MTA, as I've been emphasizing for these last months, is run by the state of New York. I want to, I want to ask that question to the audience, and I'm going to finish the answer, but I just want to do a show of hands. How many people knew before tonight that the MTA is run by the state, not the city? Did you know that? Okay, excellent. Thank you, knowledgeable audience. So there's a lot of confusion out there, and bluntly, the confusion was created purposefully years ago of creating the MTA, and no one was quite sure what it was or who was in charge. But a long time ago, it came under the domination of the state. The state names the head of the MTA, the state is supposed to make sure the MTA is running. So my answer is the Fair Fair proposal is a very good thing for fighting income inequality and creating opportunity. I didn't have the $200 million it would have taken for the state to do it. The MTA was not willing to act on it, and I said, "We're not going to take a responsibility that should be the MTAs and the states and pay for them instead, because if you do that, they will come back and try and put more and more expense on the city." I don't think that's smart. But we will, to your question, we will fight for the MTA and the state to put the Fair Fair in their future budgets. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Carmen Neely, and I represent, I am co-chair of a Black and Latino LGBT organization, represents the people here in Harlem. And my question today is, there are many LGBT people who are Black and Latino here in Harlem that are underserved and need services and programs. How are you going to ensure that the organizations that serve these people will get the funding that they need? Because we are severely underfunded here in Harlem compared to other areas of Manhattan. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the question. I'll start by saying, the, the concept that you're raising is very near and dear to my heart, because for decades, funding was not fairly distributed. It was clear that some parts of the city got disproportionately favorable treatment and some unfavorable. And obviously, within every community, we've seen reality, including within the LGBT community, that there was not a fair distribution of the resources. One of the things I'm proud of, example, just one example of a number we could talk about, is we've had a strong commitment in this administration to addressing a problem that I think was ignored for too long, which was homeless and runaway youth, many of whom are obviously members of the LGBT community. I want to thank Commissioner Bill Chong and DYCD for the work they're doing. We've made sure that facilities, including in Harlem, got the support to expand so more young people could be supported. In terms of healthcare, I would like to actually see if Dr. Bassett would like to add to the discussion of what we're doing for the LGBT community on healthcare in this community and beyond to make sure there's fairness. So I wanted to introduce our Health Commissioner, Dr. Mary Bassett.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. As you know, through the joint action of both the governor and the mayor, the Health Department has embarked on an effort called Ending the Epidemic. And our clinic in central Harlem, which is on the Harlem Hospital grounds, has greatly expanded its services. We now, and this is a service that's available to everyone who can walk in, regardless of their ability to pay, regardless of their insurance status. They can just get checked. That means that you don't have to have a complaint. You can just say, "I just want to get myself checked out" and get screened for a number of conditions. We are, have provided the most up-to-date, modern treatment for the prevention of HIV infection. We give something called PEP, which is if somebody has a high-risk exposure, they can take antiretroviral drugs, we give them the full 28-day supply. And we also will start people on PrEP. We've doing all of this at the Harlem Clinic. We're providing people HIV testing, we're testing for other sexually transmitted infections. We're starting women who want it on contraception. And I think that this is relevant to the LGBT community, because we know that the HIV epidemic has hit this community particularly hard. I'm really proud of the fact that 2/3 to 3/4 of the patients we serve are Black and Latino, a population that we have trouble reaching in other ways. Thanks, thanks for the opportunity to talk about it.
Thank you, doctor.
Hello, Mayor. My question is, my name is Heath Wade, I'm actually president of TrueHawk, which is an online tenant association. And one of the things that I'm concerned about is the fact that I don't understand why a, I guess, a resident or somebody who's looking to rent an apartment has to wait to find out the history of an apartment before they actually go to actually rent it. So right now, in order to find out the rent history, you have to actually have a lease. Then they'll actually say, "Okay, we'll show you the rent history." But at that point, the price of the rent has been jacked up.
I want to stop you on it, just because I'm literally not sure I understand. What you're, help me, help me hear the thing that you would like to see changed, and then I can figure out, one of my colleagues can help me with this question, because I'm not familiar with it.
Okay, so basically, right now, in order to find out the history of my apartment, I have to show them the lease.
When you say the history of your apartment, what do you mean?
Right, the rent history of the apartment.
The rent history.
Correct.
Of an apartment you, of an apartment you want to rent.
Right, right. Ideally, if it's something that I want to rent, I could not find out the rent history of that apartment.
Okay, okay, I got my lifeline here. Commissioner Steve Banks of Social Services understands the issue better than me. Go ahead, Steve.
So I understand the question would be, if you're renting a rent-regulated apartment, and you want to know what the history of the rent regulation rents are so you can make sure you're not being overcharged, you cannot find that out before you rent the apartment? That's what the law is, but it's a state law, because the State Department, Division of Housing and Renewal.
See, a lot of problems go back to Brian Benjamin, I just want to say that, okay? You've got a lot of making up to do.
So you've identified a really serious problem that we see a lot in the clients that are coming to the Department of Social Services or the Department of Housing Preservation Development, that you're, you're already in the apartment, and then you have to start to struggle about what's the lawful rent level. It's one of the reasons why having a lawyer in housing court is so important, to make sure that you've got the lawful rent level, but I think this is an issue we all have to work.
So can I just ask though, as a sympathetic additional question? So if you get into the apartment and find you are then being overcharged, right? You get that history after the fact, and you find there's a disparity, what can a tenant do for recourse, and can we help in any way?
A tenant can go on their own, and there's a way we can help too. A tenant can go on their own to the State Division of Housing. A tenant can go on their own to the State Division of Housing and Community Renewal because they oversee it. But again, one of the advantages we have is by having lawyers available when people are potentially in housing court, we can help you do that. And there's also the mayor's Tenant Support Unit, TSU, that does outreach in the community. But we're going to have someone come right up to you and see if we can help you with a particular problem.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Let me try. So who, right here.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. My name is Tariq Shahid from the historical mosque of Malcom Shabbaz. My question is this. Why are the affordable housing initiatives arbitrarily and capriciously taken out of the hands of ready, willing, and able community faith-based organizations like Malcom Shabbaz Development Corporation and turned over to private developers? This is a problem.
Okay.
For example, we have.
Let me, obviously, I have a great deal of respect for your institution, may I say? And I understand the question is based on how you see the situation. Let me bring up our housing commissioner, join me. Look, that's not what we're trying to do and it's not what I think should be done. And there's a difference between what was done in the past versus what we're trying to do. We believe there are many community-based organizations that can and should be crucial partners in developing affordable housing. We also, and this is where I think some of the crux of the problem is in the public discussion, we don't have enough public money to do everything ourselves. If we did, if I had enough public money, I would do everything 100% affordable and I'd be working with community groups, et cetera. We decided a long time ago, we had to bring the private sector in to be able to achieve the numbers of affordable units we need. I don't love that reality, but I think it is an honest choice that if we do, if we use the public money to leverage, we can get a lot of private investment. We can create a lot more apartments. That being said, still, we need nonprofit partners in a lot of what we do. So Commissioner, this is our housing commissioner, Maria Torres Springer. Do you have a specific case we could use to illustrate this? Okay, let me just give him back a microphone so he can give us.
Let me give you a case in point. We've been running the Malcom Shabbaz Harlem market, the most frequented tourist location in Harlem, in central Harlem.
Yep.
For the last 23 years. We have site control of the issue. We have several other parcels of land that they gave site control. Without any conversation, we received a letter saying, "You must vacate the premises in 10 days."
Hey, boy, wait one second. Is that about the market or is that about?
The market space, the location, where we are.
Okay.
Now, let me finish.
Please.
Okay, now, so when Councilman Perkins called, Congressman Rangel called, Bill Perkins called, I mean, NS Dickens called. They called, "What's going on?" We went down to a meeting. They said, "Oh, we're sorry, we didn't mean to say that." Said, "What happened was we have so many properties, we just wanted to see who was where." Then we went down to give them our plan, seeing that we had site control for the last 22 years of all the parcels. And we were told, "We're not soul sourcing to you. We're going to take it out for bid, but we've been holding the property for that."
Help me on this. And again, I have a lot of respect for the history of your organization and what you've also done with the market. Who is the, or who is the city agency you're dealing with?
HPD.
HPD. Now, obviously, you should never get a notice telling you to vacate to begin with. Second, we're not trying to scare people to find out what they're interested in. So something's wrong in this process and I want to apologize for that. Now, what we do from here, I want to understand what you're saying. Do you have an aspiration now to build?
Yes.
Okay. Where does this stand and what can we do, Commissioner?
Good evening. Thank you for your question. So what we can do moving forward, and I would, I'd love to follow up to make sure I have the very specifics. If the issue, it depends on the site, to the extent that it's a city-controlled site and we have to go through a public procurement process. But as you mentioned, if there are site control issues, you've been on the property, if it is your control, I would be more than happy to make sure that we are dealing with this issue very fairly. We are very committed to working with not-for-profit organizations as well as faith-based organizations. And we've done more of that over the course of the years. So to the extent that it's, the communication hasn't been good, our apologies, but I would very much like to follow up to make sure we correct it.
Okay, and can I ask specifically, Commissioner, and I think you can see already, the Commissioner is a very open and receptive person, that I'd like you to personally meet with you and your team so that it is not somewhere in the bureaucracy, but you will deal with the Commissioner directly.
I would be more than happy to.
Just want to make sure that you, brother, Tariq.
Hold on, Vito, Vito. Hold on one second.
Just wanted to make sure that the mayor and I are going to be working together as per your request to guarantee that something moves positive in a forward way. So you just stay in touch with the office if necessary and I'm confident that the mayor will follow up as well.
Next question, right here.
Okay.
Astagfirullahalikum. Good evening. My name is Kane, Kane Mamadou. I'm the president of African Cab Driver Association. Mr. Mayor, I don't have a question, I'm making a comment and to thank you for a few things. The first thing, I met you from my brother, Famou, who you just hired from your office. I had a chance to speak to you about what the cab driver are going through with the TLC.
I just want to say one thing, sir, because we want to make sure everybody sticks to one. So whatever topic you want to raise, but I just want you to do ones to be respectful to everyone else.
Okay, that's the topic. And I appreciate the facilitation from your office. We had a meeting July 3rd, which was the day before yesterday. I would like to thank you and also thank your officers, especially my precinct commander, my inspector, Baker, to facilitate the community issues for us.
Thank you. Thank you very, very much. I'll get you. Thank you.
We're going to go all around, you got to wait.
It's a long night. We're going to be coming around and around.
We're going to go to, get to everybody.
Hi, my name is Abby Stein and I'm a transgender woman who has been doing a lot of advocacy in the community, although my question has nothing to do with that. I want to talk about education. I grew up in New York City. I was born and raised there, but I couldn't speak English until I was 20 years old. I'm a student at Columbia University. Last semester, I was teaching with our Community Impact Program, ESL, here in Harlem. And I learned that I'm not the only one. I know in my community, I've been working with a group that has been trying to simply get the Department of Education to enforce the law with the religious community that I grew up, where thousands and thousands of kids grow up without being able to speak the native language, which ends up affecting every aspect of life. And for me.
Wait, I just want to clarify for everyone's benefit, which community are you referring?
I grew up Hasidic, so the.
You're saying in the yeshivas?
Yeah. But I have found the same problem to be with other communities who don't speak English and kids who have gone through what I assume is private schools because everyone in public school should have at least a basic knowledge of English and still don't speak the language. And that ends up affecting in every way.
What's your question?
My question is, most importantly, and I'm not trying to be like very direct, but I've done work directly with the Department of Education and with others and there's a lack of will from the part of the city to actually take on these communities.
I can speak to it. I appreciate the question. And this has been a big issue the last couple of years, as you know, and a very valid issue. We are, we will work with every community because you're right. This should be a question across the board. The particular concerns that have been raised lately are about the yeshivas. We've been working with the yeshivas directly, and let me, let me finish, to make clear that we have to have a common path to the standards that are being held for everyone. We are not finished in that process by any stretch. We'll have a lot more to say about that later in the year. But I'm convinced that the changes are happening that need to happen are not done yet. The message has been made very, very clearly. We strongly believe and we have a legal requirement to make sure that the proper education happens in every kind of school. So we are pursuing that vigorously, I assure you. Thank you.
Right here in the front, in the orange.
Thank you. Oh, okay. I'm with the New York City Equality Coalition.
Just a little closer.
And one of my members asked a question and mine is similar to that but different.
Okay.
So I'm just going to read a part of it. I'd like to note from you and other members here, what efforts will you employ to ensure that Black and Brown LGBTQI organizations receive our fair share of funding since there is such a wide disparity in the areas of monies that are awarded to organizations like the New York City Equality Coalition, like the Sankofa Institute, like New York City Pride? So I'm very interested in knowing what you will do in your office and the others to ensure that there is less disparity and more funding that's allocated to our type organizations, Black and Brown, LGBT.
Can you help me with one, one follow-up to you? Is there a particular city agency, or more than one agency you would name, where you're particularly concerned about that funding stream? Because I can give you the broad answer and I will, but I want to get the relevant commissioner involved too. So could you name where a lot of that funding is coming from that you're concerned about?
Well, it comes from the state.
No, I'm from the city, I'm saying. From which agency? Do you know which city or do your colleagues know which city agencies you're particularly concerned about that provide the funding to make sure that we're seeing the fair?
Well, some of that money would be initiated, I think, through the council.
Okay.
For example, I can't tell you a litany of organizations.
Okay, so let me go, let me try this to, I don't know if any of the commissioners who are the funding agencies immediately identify this as your agency. I'll give the broad answer that if it's city council funding, as you know, that's a decision each council member makes for their own district within their own choices. Now, the city standard, the standard I hold is I want to see equality in how we do funding decisions across the board. We have been retooling everything about the funding process, including literally the RFPs, the Request for Proposals, to try to create more of an incentive around community-based organizations, not just the larger organizations that I think often were favored in the previous administration. So we do believe in the community-based approach. There's no question, we believe in a five-borough vision. We believe in a vision that supports communities of color, of all colors. So I can't give you a specific enough answer. I can tell you what our philosophy is and I believe that philosophy is being carried out on a regular basis. If you give me an example of an agency, not, again, not the city council, which makes its own decisions member by member.
Well, the Department of Health is one.
Okay, Department of Health. So let's get Dr. Bassett up to speak to this. So Dr. Bassett, in terms of any funding that you distribute, come on over. Can you speak to what you do to try and ensure fairness and equality in the process?
You know, I mean, you're raising something that is obviously an important question and I don't know enough details to give you answers except to say that we're deeply committed as an agency to ensuring that organizations of color get the funding that they deserve to reach a community that is underserved. So I'll talk with you afterwards and get more explicit examples. Some of the issues are sometimes the ability of an organization to work with the RFP process. It's confusing, it's complicated. It requires the ability to create certain types of plans and monitor budgets. We're beginning to fund organizations to develop that capacity and so to ensure that we're able to fund organizations with larger amounts of money. That's the beginning of an answer for you and I'll speak with you personally to get more details.
Thanks very much.
Hi, my name is Anya Martinez. This is Danielle Mateo and we're currently juniors at Harlem Village Academies and we're members of Safe in Harlem. And our team is currently, we're concerned about alcohol, underage alcohol consumption and substance abuse in the area. According to New York City Department and Health of Mental Hygiene data, under-alcohol consumption among teens in Harlem nearly doubled between 2013 and 2015. And our Safe in Harlem community assessment shows that Harlem has over 125 liquor licenses within one square mile of 127. Our question to the councilmen is how does the city plan to work with Harlem teens who spread a say no, who spread a say no to drugs and underage alcohol consumption message after so many liquor licenses were granted in our community?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Excellent. Well, I'm going to start with what I think everyone is feeling. I really appreciate your advocacy and I appreciate the passion you have. And by the way, it warms my heart to see young people say. That's right. But to hear you say that not only are you concerned for your own lives, but you want to try and help your fellow young people is very, very powerful. And we want to help you do that. Now, I have the NYPD here, I have, again, the Health Commissioner here. So they will add their perspective, but I'll say this. Look, I think part of this is what we do to educate within our schools on health and on the smart choices that people need to make. I think part of this is what we do to try and provide positive options for young people, which is why, and for your age and even younger, why we did things like having after-school available for every middle school student? Why we, with the city council, we've doubled the number of summer jobs in this city for young people to now 70,000 city jobs this last summer for young people, or this summer, I should say, for young people? So I think the big answer is early and effective educating so young people know what smart choices are and healthy choices and providing those positive options. But then your question goes to something else, which is how decisions are made about businesses that sell these things. Now, the providing of the licenses, and I don't know, again, maybe Consumer Affairs wants to speak about this in health. The state of New York, the state of New York, Brian, what are you doing? The state, this, they got to come up with a better title for this agency. It's literally called the State Liquor Authority. I think they need a more gentle title. The State Liquor Authority determines who gets a liquor license, a bar or anybody else. I think you're raising a very powerful point. Should they be thinking about some kind of limitations that they have not in the past, right? I think that's a very fair point and we would welcome that dialogue to see if that change can be made. In the meantime, though, we've got the laws we've got and if we see underage drinking being promoted or tolerated, that's when Health Department, Consumer Affairs, PD, NYPD come into play. So who wants to speak to this among those agencies? What we are doing to inhibit establishments that promote underage drinking? Anyone want to speak to that?
I can say what we did for a while, but as the mayor just said, the State Liquor Authority is responsible. And young woman, I just want to thank you for, you said that about as clearly as anybody could. Thank you. The State Liquor Authority is an entity that can go in and fine people for violating the law and selling alcoholic beverages to kids who are underage. That's against the law. We used to give them money, about $150,000 a year from the city. Went to the state, they collected a million dollars in fines and we, this is for you, Senator. And we said, "Well, you know, you're collecting all this money in fines. You pay to start doing these things to see whether or not you can get people to sell to kids who shouldn't be able to buy." And they didn't, couldn't find the money. So that's something that really we need to put pressure on the state to start enforcing these laws because the laws are there and they just have to be enforced. And I'm for a regulatory approach to this, Mr. Mayor.
You're getting a tag team now, tagging in Chief O'Reilly.
For the PD answer today, if you or anyone in the room is aware of a location that sells to underage persons, notify the precinct commander or your NCO officer. We will conduct an operation in that location and if we find them in violation, and I believe it's two to three violations, we can shut them down and we can remove their liquor license.
So, and so I want to ask one more question of these two impressive young ladies. Do you, and I don't want you to say what it is, do you know any locations where you think alcohol is being provided to underage? do you know any locations where you think alcohol is being provided to underage children? Okay, if you do at any point, you will want to make sure you can confidentially report that and that will help us do the job too. But thank you very, very much for your question.
The woman in the red, yep, red view, no, the woman in the red, yep.
Good evening, everybody. I'll pass it to my president of the Senegalese of the Association.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. My name is Ibrahim Asaw. I'm the president of the Senegalese Nationals Association. I'm here with Juma Gay, who's also from the same organization, and Fatoum Bo. We would like, first of all, to thank you for the robust response that you, the city brought in when the actual president came to office and he changed all the immigration laws. Thank you so much for that. The question is, we have a community-based organization here on 116th Street and we are pretty much a liaison for our community. A lot of people don't speak very good English. A lot of people don't know how to navigate the bureaucracy. We help them secure housing, give them advices on how to put people in school. But we are struggling a lot for funding issues. What an organization like mine, and I see a lot of colleagues here, can expect from the city to continue doing the job that we do?
Okay, I appreciate that very much. So first of all, I had the joy of being to your beautiful country you come from many years ago. And I know what a strong and vibrant community there is here now in Harlem and in all of New York City. The two ways I would say we can help. One gets to the previous question about funding for community-based organizations. We're trying again to create more equity in that process and make more funding opportunities available. And we can literally have people from our team help you identify what those options may be and how to apply for them. The second is a direct relationship with the city agencies. So for example, a lot of what I'm sure your constituents are looking for, they're having an issue that may be pertinent to the police, to the Housing Department, Department of Education, whatever, you need a senior level contact you can go to to get things solved. We will work with you on that. Our representatives here from the Community Affairs Unit will follow up with you to make sure that we can connect you to the right people and the right agencies and that way you can make sure community needs are acted on quickly. Thank you. Oh, please, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Bita from the mayor's office of immigrant affairs. I just want to say that we've actually partnered with your organization to do a know your rights forum responding directly to what the mayor said, which is bringing our agency partners to your location to address the needs that you've raised to us. So we want you to continue to see us as an organization and an entity that you can come to, to connect you with other agencies to address the needs that your community is facing. On the funding question, we've actually launched recently through our office, through our Action NYC program, a fellowship that exactly aims at helping to build the capacity of hard-to-reach immigrant populations. We have a few organizations that serve African populations, Sotheby's, African Communities Together and others who are current fellows. If you want to learn more about that work, I'm happy to connect separately.
Okay, thank you very much. Woman in the black right there.
Thank you.
Don't forget, simple questions, Mr. Mayor.
Ready.
Less on the answers.
Thank you for having this town hall in Harlem. My name is Leila and this is my grandmother. And my question is around sexual assault and how it's dealt with in this city. I believe that New York is the greatest city in the world, but when it comes to sexual assault, we're not much better than a regime like Saudi Arabia. We have these centers like this NYC Well and places that you call the Cope. But if you're a woman calling about sexual assault, you're usually just given a list of other numbers to call. I went to the Family Justice Center until they told me to stop coming and I was barred from going to the district attorney's office. I called the district attorney so many times about the man who sodomized me who lives next door when I was super sick and I suffered neurological problems that I now have to have thousands of dollars of treatment for annually. I called and called and I was put in Rikers Island for 15 days for calling. I had already talked to special victims. When I tried to then go to the civil court and get a copy of my report, it was denied, it came back blank with nothing but a number on it. Everything I had said, wait. And then when I went to civil court, I wasn't allowed to talk either. At my worst and my weakest, I was treated like an angry black woman. And I am also, I'm a black woman, but, and sometimes I am angry, but I'm also a survivor and a fighter and a professor. And I deserve advocacy as much as any man or any citizen in this city. And being stomped into submission by our system of justice without one word to say what was happening, my grandmother had to come clean out her savings for my medical bills as they were throwing me in jail just for calling and asking for the victim's services counseling.
Okay, I wanted to say to you, I'm very, very sorry for what you've been through. I don't have the ability to speak to everything that you just experienced and know the details, but let me speak to the bigger situation and my colleagues I know feel the same way. We don't want anyone to go through what you've gone through. We are trying in a lot of different ways to do more to help people who are victims of this kind of violence. And we're trying to always show respect for everyone in the middle of this process. It's very painful, even to try and get the help, as you described, is a painful process and we want to make it a better process. So I'm very sorry for what you went through. If there are still ways?
There are, how? How can it be better and how can I get help?
So let me say this, that's why I'm not going to discuss in front of everyone because I think it's your own situation and we should.
Sexual assault is not just my situation.
Listen to what I'm saying.
It's all of our situation.
Of course it is, but I'm saying.
It's every woman's situation and with 1% of sexual assaults being prosecuted, it's not just my situation.
Ma'am, I did not mean to say that. I don't think I said that at all. I'm saying you are raising a very personal issue that I'd like people to speak to you privately about how we can help. And I think that is the appropriate way to do it. We have senior level people here who are ready to help you. So I'm telling you.
I called the public advocate, I got no call back.
The public advocate is a separate person. We have senior level administration officials right here who I am telling you will help you right now. On the bigger issue, I'm very sorry what you went through and it does not reflect to what we want to see in this city. And we will work to make sure that others do not go through such a horrible experience. That was good, thank you. Will you talk to her? Yeah, why don't you?
Hello, my name is Ronald Lang and I've been part of the Harlem community for all my life. And I want to know, why is it that an organization that been very successful for over 50 years with drug prevention with kids, a place where Michelle Obama visited, Rosa Parks visited, Muhammad Ali visited, is now all of a sudden don't want to be funded all of a sudden?
What's the name of the organization, sir?
Our Children Foundation.
Okay.
It's on 125th Street, 527 West 125th Street. They've been around for years. I was a part of that program when I was a child. I became a film writer, producer. I wrote and produced a movie all about the Benjamins. I used to write for Jamie Foxx and I come back to Harlem and I see this is happening and this hurts me bad.
Sir, I appreciate it and I want to know what happens. Do you know what agency was funding it?
The state, the state.
The state, okay.
The state was funding it and the state was funding.
Senator, come on up.
Yes, the state was funding it. The state was funding it and I want to know, I want to know why they can't get grandfathered in.
So, hold on, hold on, let me, let me speak to the situation. Are you all familiar with the phrase, "The root of all evil"? Are you familiar with that phrase?
I've heard of it.
Yes. First of all, I'm very concerned that an organization with that kind of distinguished history got defunded and I want to see how the city can help. But I also think if it was state funding, it got cut off, we need the state senator to help get involved. You want to speak to it?
Sure, I think the most logical thing to do is for us to have a conversation. I have my chief of staff, Christina Dozier, here. Let's sit down and talk tomorrow because I love the organization and so whatever.
You know about Our Children Foundation?
Of course I know about Our Children Foundation. I know a lot about Our Children Foundation.
Thank you, thank you.
So let's talk, let's talk afterwards. Actually, why don't we do it now?
Okay, let's do it now, yeah.
And then our office will try to be of assistance.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Peggy, go ahead.
Good evening. I'm Peggy Shepherd with We Act for Environmental Justice. Hi, and I'm a member of the New York City Coalition to End Lead Poisoning and we helped advocate for the local lead law. But what we've understood now is that the city is not enforcing the law. Now, I know when you were in the city council, you were very enthusiastic about this, but the city is not enforcing the law. Landlords are not doing what they're supposed to do. They are not notifying tenants and they are not making sure that a child under six in that apartment, that lead is being abated. So we hope that we do not have to go back to court and that the city will do what they should be doing in enforcing local lead law.
Well, Peggy, I've known Peggy many decades, in fact, and admire your work greatly. Honestly, I go to town hall meetings all over the city. I talk to people all the time and this is, I'm not saying it's any less true. It's the first time hearing such a specific suggestion that the city is not enforcing and that worries me deeply. But I don't have the answer at my fingertips because it's the first time I'm hearing the concern raised in this manner. I don't, do you know which agency is supposed to actually make sure those notices are posted and all? Is that? Vito, is that HPD? Okay, Commissioner, either one of you.
Good evening. So we take very seriously our responsibility to enforce the lead law. To the extent that there are specific buildings or additional ways where you think that that should be stricter, we would be more than happy to make sure that we are pursuing those. Vito Masocholo will follow up. He's our deputy commissioner for enforcement. All of his crews are the ones who do this every day. And so thank you for that feedback, but we'll make sure that we're following up on either a specific building or additional ways we can be more aggressive.
Good evening, Mayor. My question is, the homeless population in Harlem has steadily increased, especially in East Harlem, around 125th Street on Park Avenue. What is being done to address this problem? There are schools all around the surrounding area and there are like an inordinate amount of drug rehab programs in that area as well. What is being done about to address that issue?
Thank you. You're exactly right. There's an area along 125th Street where a lot of people congregate. Some are homeless, some are not. Let me just say that to begin. As you said, there are methadone clinics and other treatment programs. Some people who congregate there actually have a home but go to those facilities and then loiter on the street. There's been a coordinated effort with Department of Social Services, NYPD, to get people the help they need so they are not loitering on the street. Or that's the case where someone's homeless, for example, and we can help them come into a facility, get the help they need, get mental health services, address substance misuse, whatever it may be. There have been efforts by, and I think successful efforts, by the sanitation department to make sure that we're not seeing the debris that used to be left around those areas. So I think it's a very, I know, it's a very central focus that we do not want to see what's happened on that area of 125th Street go back to what it was and we want to keep cleaning it up. The underlying question that I think you're getting to is one, what are you doing about homelessness? But then there's a second question, what do we do about all those facilities being congregated in one place? Now, I don't want to beat up on Brian Benjamin anymore because I think he's had enough for one evening. There is, part of the problem is the city and state are not necessarily on the same page. The state authorizes the methadone clinics. That's one track. The city has its own services, so they're not coordinated and sometimes they end up being concentrated in a single location. In terms of what we're trying to do about homelessness, Commissioner can speak to it, but it's a very comprehensive, well-resourced plan to get direct contact between folks who are on the street and trained homeless services workers who go to them, work with them, get to know them and go back and go back and go back to finally convince people to come off the streets once and for all. That's been going on for a little over a year. It's called Homstat. In that year plus, about 700 people who were living on the street have come off the street, accepted shelter, accepted services. We got a lot more of that to do, but we think we have finally found a model that does make a big impact. But as I turn to Commissioner, I just want to note, part of the challenge we all face is somehow understanding and it's, people don't wear a badge that say, "I'm homeless" or "I have a home." Some people do not have a home and we have to give them very special attention to get them to accept shelter. Other people do have a home, have other challenges in their life, are standing or loitering in the same place, but to a community member, the frustration is the same. Do you want to speak further?
Yeah, I would just add in that particular location, we've added additional outreach staff that make regular daily and throughout the day visits to that site. We do find what the mayor described, that there are a number of people that are there who are, who have a place to stay. And we're very focused, though, on trying to bring more people off the street, which is the reason why we added more outreach staff there. We're adding more safe haven beds, more supportive housing and that's going to come online over the course of the next year and that'll help us bring more people off the street.
Thank you, and I'm Deputy Inspector Kathleen Walsh. I'm the commander of office of the 25th Precinct and we cover 125th Street and Park Avenue. I believe we have spoken before and this comes up at a lot of our meetings, the homeless in the area. And I usually start off and I, you know, I say that homelessness in itself is not a crime. But however, saying that, we have over 356 quality of life arrests in that area year to date. We have over 753 criminal summonses and oath summonses. And that is for quality life issues like public urination, public intoxication, drug use and whatnot. The task force that you see out there on 125th Street, Lexington Avenue and Park have done a really good job. And I say it again, we can't do it alone. We do it partner with DHS, with sanitation, with other organizations such as COX and Odyssey House. We do, there has been success stories where we've found housing for some of our homeless population. But a lot of times, they will come back to the area that they're familiar with. They, you know, are used to, this is where they are. This is the people that they hang out with. And there are a lot of methadone clinics. There's homeless shelters in the area. The Metro North Station provides shelter. So it does attract a lot of the homeless population.
Thank you.
But we are doing our best out there.
The woman in the green, right, right there, yep.
Well done.
We're going to try to get to everybody.
As many as we can.
Question.
Good evening, I'm Joy Williams. I am a homeowner in central Harlem and a member of the newly formed Home Sharing Association. So I don't want to debate the home sharing law, but I do want to address the harassment, intimidation and quite frankly, the violation of civil rights of those of us from the office of, of your office of special enforcement. And I need to figure out what you're going to do about it. So let me give you a couple of examples. One is when the HPD came to my door, before the gentleman, the three gentlemen that left, I was told that, because I wouldn't let them in, that they had other ways of getting in my house, which is clearly intimidation and I don't know what he was trying to say other than getting a warrant and a sheriff. So other people have, because I operate because, because too much is given, much is required and other people won't speak up because they are afraid. They have, their children have been intimidated. People have pushed in and they thought they had to let people in when there was no warrant. And this has to stop. So we can debate and I have my day in court, but we should not be harassed.
Okay, I appreciate the question a lot. So this is about, you're talking about home sharing economy, Airbnb, that type of thing, right? Okay. Look, as you know, this is an area where there are a lot of things not yet covered by the law because it's a new part of our economy. But there are other things that are covered by the law and that's why the Office of Special Enforcement is there. And I don't know anything about your building. I'm just going to speak about what I've seen in the city as a whole. There have been real concerns, particularly in some larger apartment buildings, about safety and security for the folks who live there. There have been situations where, in effect, hotels were created in something that was supposed to be a residential dwelling. That may have no bearing on your case. I'm trying to explain why the enforcement dynamic was created. It's not supposed to, obviously, there's not supposed to be any harassment or anything like that directed at anybody or their family. The reason we do the enforcement is because there are great concerns in communities all over the city about safety and security issues related to these apartments being rented out. But that's supposed to still be respectful and obviously follow the law. I'm sorry for what you went through and I'd like our folks to follow up to see what happened there and to obviously make sure that does not happen again. Thank you.
Hello, Mayor. Barbara Askins, 125th Street Business Improvement District. Mayor de Blasio, I want to thank you so much for the recent announcement of adding $31 million. million for your sanitation program, that's going to bring 393 Big Belly cans to three neighborhoods, and more pickups. And the thing that's so fascinating about this is because Community Board 10 and the BID started, and we've been meeting every month, and we came to the same conclusion that you did, that we need Big Belly cans and more pickups in Harlem. So on this Tuesday, we are announcing and rolling out four cans as a pilot project, on the corner of Lenox Avenue, with artwork from Harlem Artists, for the Big Belly cans. But that was $31,000 for four cans, for five years. And we had to get money from the City Council, plus sponsors. So since you have these cans, we are asking you to please take a look at us, and see, can you expand it? We are ready to go, we have the mosque on 116th Street, who want to do their street, we have 127th Street that's ready to go.
She wants free cans.
I want free cans, I want Harlem in this program.
I hear your passion, let me, okay. So let me answer, because we, we speed it up for everyone's benefit, quick answer.
Sure.
We think this new approach is going to have a huge impact. We started in the three areas of the city that had the biggest problem, in terms of rats in particular. We are ready, if it works, to expand from there. So that's the good news. The sanitation Commissioner, Commissioner Garcia, will speak to you personally, so the point is, the natural thing that's going to determine the next steps, will be seeing how this pilot goes in those three neighborhoods, I think we'll have results when, when you guess, Commissioner, when we have a sense of how it's working, roughly.
I think we'll have a sense by the, by the end of this year, because we'll be doing additional.
And then that, then that, hold on, then that will be perfect timing, because that's when we start the budget process with the City Council, to decide, if it's working, it's the kind of thing we will want to invest more in, and then determine the next neighborhoods. So, Commissioner here is you, I hear you, and you will have a chance to make your case when we start the city budget process in January.
But I'll talk to you about the corners that you, that you're specifically looking at.
The gentleman right here in the white shirt.
Mr. Mayor, good evening, thank you for your time. I have a question regarding security. I'm new to this country, I'm new to this neighborhood, since two years, and it's exactly two years today, I've seen people getting shot, in broad daylight, motorcycle running totally wide on the weekend, running over kids, running over people, running on sidewalks. I've seen, you know, people on drugs in the park, people getting drunk. Two days ago, actually Sunday.
You've got to get to your question.
I just want to mention that, I was going in the park with my little kid on my shoulder, running into a lady, standing on her knee, with a gentleman naked in front of her, in sexual intercourse.
What's the question, sir?
The question is, you have a police commissioner, you have a commissioner in charge of park and recreation, I think somebody is not doing his job correctly, and what are you doing to address the problems of security, so everybody can have a safe life in the neighborhood?
Thank you. I, I, look, I'm just, I respect, there's, there's no crime we tolerate, so any of the instances you just mentioned, I don't accept them, and I understand they're very bad for everyone involved, and for the broader community. But that being said, as I said early on, the changes that have happened year after year, it's been going on for almost 25 years, in terms of increased safety in the city, those are facts, those are known facts, it's been a very steady pattern, and the NYPD has in fact sped up that process in recent years. We see fewer and fewer shootings, fewer and fewer homicides, more police, we've added 2,000 more police officers on patrol, working with the City Council in the last two years, so we can go even deeper into addressing these issues. So my answer to you is, there's every indication that the NYPD is more effective all the time at addressing these situations, we don't tolerate any of them, but I think folks would say, we've made a lot of changes over the last few years, and more are coming, particularly because we have additional police officers on patrol. Yes, sir. Go ahead, sir. Okay, let's get, we want everyone just get your question out, so I can answer it quick, we'll keep going around.
Hello?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, we know each other from GMHC and the public advocate days, and you're doing some great work at HIV and AIDS, so we, I just wanted to say that.
Thank you.
And I joined some of my colleagues that were speaking tonight, from the New York City Quality Coalition, which is a coalition of Black and Latino LGBT organizations, and I wanted to raise a question about representation. Currently, CB10 has no openly Black or Latino representation on that board, and I know that's not your issue, hold on a second, I know that's not your issue, but it is a issue, and I raise that only in that, in terms of, in, in terms, in additional, in terms of funding, we would just like to make sure that there is adequate representation of, a lot of times when there's LGBT representation, it's not Black and Latino any representation.
So let me say to you, I, I want to say, appreciate the point, it is a issue for all of us, I agree with that fundamentally. I also want to respect the way our city charter is built, that the borough president and the council members determine the makeup of the community boards. But to the previous questions about equity and funding, what I'd ask is that, you or any other members of the coalition, if you have any specific agency funding streams you're concerned about equity in, I want to know about them, and I just want to say, one of my borough reps will come by and speak to you, because that's where we, the, the city government can take action.
Well, Ms. Mayor, I just wanted to leave, uh, uh, follow up with that. Matt Monroe, Matt McRoe in your office is great with that, Councilman Perkins and Senator Benjamin have been working on that, what I would like to do, if possible, is to get someone from your office, to work with the council person, and Perkins and the state senator, to try and figure out some ways that we can address this problem.
Yes, we'll do that, sir.
If that's possible, okay?
Thank you very much, my pleasure.
The woman in the hat, yep.
Woman in the hat, I like that. Hello, woman in the hat. Wait, take the microphone.
Hello, you need the microphone.
Hello, hello, Mayor. My name is Bernetta, and I'm a volunteer for Picture the Homeless, and I would like to pass, Picture the Homeless, yeah, me, yeah.
That's your question.
My question is, I would like to first pass this question to Nikia, where you at? Nikia!
Okay, ma'am, we got, you got to take the question.
You can't do that, you cannot do that.
Ask the question, or we got to get to something else, go ahead.
Mayor, my question, may I read it?
Please.
All right. Good evening, everybody, my name is Bernetta, I'm a volunteer at Picture the Homeless, where we organize homeless and famili-, and familiar homeless people for permanent housing, and to end police harassment. Hold on, let me finish. Harlem is one of the neighborhoods with the most vacant property, a, a lot of which is being held by private developers and public agencies for decades. As the neighborhood gets more and more attractive, we're seeing more of these vacant lots and buildings being developed as market rate housings, which doesn't serve long-term residents of the community. Picture the Homeless, which is not a fake organization, and Picture the Homeless and the City Council have introduced the Housing Not Where Housing Act, which would count and register the vacant properties in our communities, and hold owners accountable for sitting and speculating on a property. Mayor, we want to know, with all due respect, what will you do to help us pass the Housing Not Where Housing Act, sir?
Thank you, thank you very much for the question. Thank you. So, I think you asked the question just fine, you didn't need to pass the ball, you did great. So, look, I don't know that specific piece of legislation, I will happily look into it and be able to give you an answer, or give a public, the public an answer. I, I am very concerned about any situation where housing is held off the market, okay? So I, I'm sure we share an immediate common ground, I do not want to see housing held off the market, I do not want to see speculation. I have been very concerned why some buildings just sit empty for many years, that's not good for anyone. And we have the most aggressive affordable housing program this city's ever had, and my message to any landlord is, if you're not going to use your building, give it, we'll take it, we'll find a way to take it and turn it into affordable housing. So I don't know about legislation, we'll get you an answer, but we share the common goal, we do not want to see buildings warehoused at all. Thank you, thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Chanel Washington. I love y'all too, the whole community. My question is, will you be willing to take a very close look into the appraisal industry, to address the economic and racial disparities within the process of becoming an appraiser? And who are these appraisers? For they are the ones who are licensed to put the values on the properties in our districts, as these values are the driving force in gentrification and displacement in our districts. How will you begin to address such a complicated issue?
Wow. That is, okay. I want, I want to give credit to everyone at this town hall meeting, because I'm getting whole new ideas tonight, and you're the first person in three and a half years, who has ever raised the question of who becomes the appraiser, and now that has an impact on the process, I congratulate you and thank you. Now, I don't know, I don't know how people become an appraiser, I don't know if that is city or state, does anyone know how someone becomes an appraiser? Panel of experts, no, no one knows who, how we become an appraiser. We will find out, because I think it's.
Sir, I do.
Okay, how does someone become an appraiser?
So first you have to take courses that run you about $3,000.
But which agency, I'm sorry, which level of government handles it, that's what I need to know.
There is no level of government handling.
It's all private sector?
That's right, you can't even get a voucher, you can't get financial aid to do this.
No, I'm asking you, is there any part of government that has to give a license to an appraiser?
Yes.
Which part of government?
Department of License.
Department of License, State of New York?
Department of License.
State?
Yes.
Or you guys? State? Brian Benjamin? Brian, you are destroying everything, Brian. Brian?
I know Chanel very well, we serve on a community board together, and so Chanel, let's talk afterwards.
Okay, so, but I want to say, I want to say to the point.
Okay.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Okay. Whoever it is.
We will figure it out together.
We'll figure out, but it's a very valid question, because we, I agree with you 100%. We want access to people from all communities, to the right to do that work, because you're right, that work has a very fundamental impact on everything else.
It's that it's a valued opinion, so opinions are derived from your experience.
Yep.
So if you have experience on Long Island, and you drive into my community to put a million-dollar value on a property.
I appreciate it.
We have a problem with that in my community.
Brian, will you work with us to figure out?
We'll coordinate, absolutely.
Which agency, and how we can open up opportunity?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
And I will call you Chanel on that.
Thank you. Good to see you. Okay, no, I want his undivided attention. Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, thank you so much for coming up to Harlem, and hearing our issues here, thank you, Perkins, I work very closely with you, thank you, Gail. My name is Stephanie McGraw, I'm the founder and executive director of WARM, that stands for We All Really Matter, it's a nonprofit organization that's based here in Harlem, and I'm also a survivor. My question to you is, what can we do to make ACS accountable for citizens and parents who are falsely accused? I was battered by ACS. I adopted my grand nephew March 17th, 2017, four months later, I was whisked into court, and ACS illegally removed my adopted son from my custody. Now, there were kids that were dying last year. I worked with Commissioner Kelly and Chief Kathleen O'Reilly, to do the domestic violence training video, because they wanted someone that had experience on, on how to deal with these issues. They have all these committees that they are now creating, but there's no one on these committees that have experience to train these ACS workers on how to be sensitive when you come into our community and snatch our kids, it's the new silent killer. I have a child now that's in the system, that he's lost now, they can't even find him, and I was accused, I work in this community, I have worked with thousands of women in this community, to save lives, and I was battered and accused of beating and starving my nephew, and he had everything, and they did nothing to work with me. They forcedified papers and illegally removed my child. Commissioner, Mr. Mayor, please can create a oversight of women that have experience, that knows how to deal with these issues, because you're hiring people that know nothing about what we had to deal with in our community. I need your help, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, what I'd like to do, I think, thank you very much.
Kathleen O'Reilly knows me personally.
Yep.
That's my friend.
I would like, first of all, I'm very, very sorry for everything you've been through, and I appreciate everything you've done for this community. Our deputy mayor, ACS is under the oversight of Deputy Mayor and Dr. Armenia Palacio, she has been responsible for the changes that we're trying to make, and I think we would all agree, ACS needs to improve in many ways, and a lot of kids need protection in the past, that we're not getting the protection they need. So, we are trying to do a lot to make ACS more effective, we're also trying to do a lot to help ACS workers understand the circumstances of people who they are working with, including the kind of training, we're literally doing implicit bias training and other trainings to help the workers understand better how to work with families. But I'm going to ask the deputy mayor to talk to you directly, because I want her to hear your story, and I want her to hear your recommendations on how we can deal with things better going forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman, good evening, Mr. Mayor, thank you for being with us tonight, and particularly want to thank all of our neighbors for being out. I have a very simple question, Mr. Mayor, because it's an important issue, it strikes a lot of families, how can we better ensure that the emotional disturbed persons and the mental health issues are enforced when there are 911 calls from families who are seeking help, to better protect not only the family, but the officers who respond, the police officers who respond?
Michael, thank you very, very much, I want to thank you, because for decades, you have worked for policing to be fair and effective in communities, and for a different and better relationship between police and community, I want to thank Michael for the extraordinary, and everyone at National Action Network for what you have done. The first thing, I just have to, I have to frame this for a minute, because I think it gets to the heart of the matter. So, you know the work my wife Sherlaine has done on mental health, that was motivated by the realization that in this city, and unfortunately in the whole country, the closest thing we have to a mental health system is our correctional system, that's the sad reality of America and of New York City. We aim to fundamentally change that, which is why we have invested almost a billion dollars in providing mental health services to all communities, and particularly communities that have been deprived of them, and to create avenues where people, like literally starting with a phone number, where any New Yorker can call on any type of mental health challenge, and get actual support, get actual treatment, get connected to the services that could help to turn their lives around. That's never existed before. And that is the beginning of this, this horrible tragedy we experienced a few days ago, 32-year-old young man, but we know whatever was plaguing him started a long time ago, and clearly wasn't treated the way he deserved. So we've got to go to the root of the problem first. The second point is, we are rapidly training our police force in how to handle situations with emotionally disturbed persons, the last number I saw was about 55, 100 officers have been trained, we intend to train a lot more. We know, with that training, our officers can be better prepared for the safety of everyone, and you're right, for the safety of the civilians and the officers alike. So I think it's a combination of getting at the root cause, and training our officers, and it's consistent with the de-escalation training as well, how to handle situations the best possible, including sometimes where appropriate, waiting for backup, et cetera, that training I think is going to make a huge difference. Let me say one thing on this point, and I want to ask everyone to recognize this, because this is a usable piece of information from this meeting, to Michael's question, we, again, we have to create a actual mental health system where there's access to mental health services, that people feel comfortable taking advantage of, we have to get rid of the stigma, we have to make it easy, for a lot of services, they have to be free. It begins with having that single point of access, and that is what the initiative that my wife Sherlaine McCray created, Thrive NYC, starts with a simple concept, one phone number you can call, if anyone in your life is experiencing a mental health challenge. And it is not necessarily the very, very severe challenges, it could be literally someone's feeling anxiety or depression, and they just need to talk it through with someone, 1-888-NYC-WELL. I want you, please, join me in repeating that number, 1-888-NYC-WELL. Please remember it, and please help other people to know it, because we can get people help right away. Thank you, Michael.
Hello?
You're next, the next group.
My name is Reginald Green, I'm not a president of any organization, I'm not a I'm not a politician. Just a law student, and I live in East Harlem. And every morning, I go with my wife to walk our dog, little Brussels Griffin. Not my choice. And we walk her, and we go through our neighborhood, and it takes us so long to find a spot to put her poop, you know, the little bag, to put it away. We go two to three blocks on 119th. And I went down further to 110th, tried to see, maybe it's just our neighborhood, but actually it's a problem all the way throughout, from 110th to about 125th on Pleasant, First, Second, Third, Lex. It's really hard to find a garbage can.
What's your question? What's your question?
My question is, what can I do? Instead of asking, are you aware? I'm sure you're aware that there's an issue with garbage. I'm sure you're aware that we don't get pickup frequently. But what can I do to ensure that every corner, 80 corners, get a dispenser for dog poop and also has baggies that are maybe donated by the city? And then what else can we do in our community to make sure 360 garbage cans are placed in all those areas I just noted, which is one garbage can per corner?
So I'll start and then pass to Commissioner. I appreciate, I appreciate the question. I also appreciate the impulse to say, what can the citizen do too? I appreciate that very much. We, I want to be real with you to begin. We do not have a public trash can on every corner of New York City. That's just not the way it's structured. They tend to be on the biggest, busiest streets and certainly not in primarily residential areas. So I just want to frame that first because if we could, we would, but it would also cause a huge expense having to maintain all of those, so they tend to be the busiest areas. But your point is very well taken, and so what can the sanitation department, since now you have the commissioner standing in front of you, what can a sanitation department do to help residents who want to address the issue?
So we certainly can look at specific corners, but I have to tell you that as the mayor said, we do not put them on residential blocks, and we do not put them in areas without very high traffic from pedestrians because we can't keep up with the service that they would need. So we can come talk to you. We can also think about some other creative partnerships, particularly with organizations related to dogs. And this is also actually the week, the 40th anniversary of the pooper-scooper law, for those of you who did not know that.
Thank you for sharing.
Hello. Thank you for having us.
Yes, sir.
It's karma. You was my coach about 30, 40 years ago for the Boys Club, and you taught us how to be disciplined, and I think you turned out a bunch of good players.
All right.
That being said, I lived in Harlem all my life, right? And I'm a CVH member. I'm also a Local 79 member for Construction's Local 79 Union. Now, my thing is on the rezoning. Now, we have a lot of, not much public land, but we do have some public land. And on those public lands, I don't see that we're getting what we should. I'm looking, I'm asking you, Mayor, that especially for the ballpark in 111th Street, Madison and Park, we would like 40% guaranteed housing at an MIA of 30% with permanent affordability. Plus, I would also like 30% local hiring from the community with union opportunities for the people in the community. Because I feel, I'm about to retire, so I don't really have to worry about work in itself, but the community itself, we need to uplift that. And as far as I can see, union jobs is going to give you pension, annuity, it's going to give you a future, it's going to give you a career. I don't want it to be that the people in my neighborhood get a job, and once that job is done, they're done. We need something that's going to be...
Thank you. Because for the interest of time, I got the point loud and clear, and I appreciate it. So, okay, real quick answer, so now this is going to go through U-Lerp. Okay. So this, look, there's a proposal right now for the site you're talking about, and the proposal is not where you are now. It does have a lot of housing for folks at lower income levels. It is 100% affordable housing across the board. Everyone in this city has a different opinion on what level of affordability we should be talking about. I will tell you upfront, there are a lot of lower income folks who need affordable housing in the city. There's a lot of working-class folks who need affordable housing. There's a lot of middle-class folks who need affordable housing. So the attitude of this administration is that we are trying to create affordable housing across all of those categories to the tune of 200,000 apartments. So I want her to understand, our affordable housing plan is 200,000 apartments that either going to be subsidized or built new. That's enough for about half a million people. Now, some organizations, and I have a lot of respect for Community Voices Heard, some organizations want us to make a higher percentage of the units for folks at lower income. We negotiate that through each time, and there's going to be a public process and a chance to influence the outcome. Your previous question about, or your previous point about if it's on city-owned land, what should we do? Our view is, we still believe in that mix of incomes everywhere because we think there's need everywhere. We would love to use union labor wherever possible, but we've also asked the trades to help us with a special rate for affordable housing. That's still under discussion. So what I want to achieve is affordable housing, mix of incomes, union labor if I can get the right rate, and definitely, even though I can't legally mandate it, we make very clear to everyone involved in building the housing, we prefer local hiring, and that has helped to get more local hiring into the process. Thank you very much.
The gentleman right there on the 10, yes, you, sir.
I'm Dr. George Williams, and I live and work in Harlem. First of all, Mr. Mayor, I want to applaud you on the decrease in safety in our public school system.
The increase in safety, the decrease in crime?
Decrease in crime, public safety. I'm sorry. One of the things I would like to ask with regard to public school education, cost-effective ways of considering incorporating programs like yoga and mindfulness in the public school system?
Yes.
It is a cost-effective way. It gives you jobs. It provides children the benefits. It improves the focus and attention, classroom behavior.
Yep. I got you. I can speak to it. Deputy Chancellor is going to follow up.
And the other thing is, with the defunding of arts programs...
Yep.
Are there any initiatives in trying to keep it in...
Okay, so let me speak to that very quick. First of all, we have refunded the arts programs. We did an initiative three years ago, and we've kept it up. We added $20 million more a year for arts programs to try and bring them up to the level they should be at, and that's been very positive for our children. So our deputy chancellor's here, and I just wanted to follow up, and I'll give the mandate, Deputy Chancellor Gibson, that the idea of yoga, mindfulness, et cetera, is consistent with our larger new initiative to create physical education programs in every school because some schools don't have them at all, and we want to use a lot of different tools to create that. So you want to speak...
And we're doing that, and that's a very good question. We're also doing a lot of socially-emotional learning in our schools, which involves yoga, and yoga is a part of physical education. But if you're speaking about a specific school, I can follow up with you with that as well.
Okay.
Good evening. I'm Nicole Triplet. I have a quick question. Mayor, you based a lot of your campaign largely on addressing racial disparities and stop and frisk. If Right to Know Act passes the council this year, will you support it?
I've said very clearly that we are implementing the same principles of the Right to Know Act through the administrative code of the NYPD, and we believe that's the right way to do it. I want to explain why. It's a very, people who support the Right to Know Act, obviously I feel a lot of kindredness with, but I have an argument I've made to a lot of the leading council members and advocates who are supporting this, that I believe this needs to be done in a sequence because we are changing the culture of the NYPD, and we've been changing it rapidly, the retraining of all the police, the implicit bias training, the de-escalation training, et cetera. I believe sometimes the best way to change an organization is let it change its own rules and let that take hold. So right now, a lot of the things that the coalition around Right to Know have asked for have been integrated into the practices of the NYPD. I believe that's what we should be doing this year, and then we can revisit after we see that take hold, what to do next.
The woman in the blue back there? Yes, the woman in the blue.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm a Harlem resident. My concern is, I understand that the city is combating and fighting the rat population, but in the process, they have moved all of the garbage receptacles along Manhattan Avenue and Morningside Avenue. What do they expect people to put, where do they expect people to put this garbage at?
I appreciate it.
That these rats are coming out at night attacking people.
So I want to thank you for that question because now, come on over, Commissioner, Commissioner, come back. So, okay. I asked myself the same question, and I want to thank you for raising it. Here we have the Health Commissioner and Sanitation Commissioner, and they can tell you the theory, but I just want to say, as you answer, as you answer, people have a very legitimate question. If you take away the trash cans, what do you do with the trash? And don't you create a little bit of a vicious cycle there? So...
You're talking about the litter baskets.
But you can speak to what you can.
So we look at litter baskets all the time to see whether or not we have the pedestrian traffic to support them, but the other thing is if they are being used for household waste, which is a misuse and a fineable violation, we will remove the basket because it creates a bigger litter problem in the community. So we can communicate to, I'll come and talk to you about your specific litter basket issue, but if it is misused with household waste, we do take them away.
Hey, hold on one sec. I want to add to that. So the point, I just want to clarify the answer. The point is, the rule that everyone's supposed to live by is the trash that goes in a trash can is when someone's walking down the street and they have a candy wrapper, they have something from McDonald's, whatever, that's who throws the trash in a trash can. We know some people in New York City unfortunately take their trash, their garbage, out of their apartment and put it in the public trash can, and that overflows them and makes it a welcoming environment for rats. But to your original point, the problem is, as we try to address that problem, then we leave people without an option for the regular trash. So the commissioner is saying, we're trying to stop the rats, and we think that's a fundamental problem? I don't think we have a great answer of how do we get people to stop putting their household trash in the public trash can? Do you have an answer of how we are, at least what we are trying to do?
So what we try to, we actually, our goal and objective is to make sure that we are keeping the streets clean. Sometimes that means the litter basket should be there. Sometimes it means we take it away, and your scorecard rating goes up, by the way. Your scorecard rating was above 90% this past fiscal year, which I think is the first time that's happened.
Tell people what that means to the owner of the...
That means that the mayor's office goes around and checks every block to make sure I'm doing a good job.
All right.
And so, and then they score us.
So I would like...
But we will, I will come and talk to you and see you about this.
The commissioner will come to see you. The commissioner will come out to your block to see what's going on, okay? And thank you for the question.
Good evening. Mayor de Blasio, some buildings in our, some TIL buildings in our community have been in the program for decades and have not been renovated and turned over to tenants as was promised when they first entered the program. Even worse, some, at least two that I'm aware of right now, have been removed due to easy fix paperwork issues. With the deep housing crisis we're in, I don't think the city can afford to lose truly affordable homeownership opportunities. How can we make sure these buildings remain in the program, thrive, and that the tenants become homeowners, and more importantly, reverse the decision to remove these properties from tenants who were there when nobody wanted to be there, who risked their lives, invested in this property when nobody cared?
Thank you. Thank you for the question. So Commissioner is going to speak about... Okay.
Two buildings that are here tonight representing them there. I've got 235 West 116th Street, and I see 123 West 112.
Thank you. Okay, we got it. We got it. Thank you. So this is a real problem, to say the least, and this is a problem that goes back a long time, and you're absolutely right. I want to start with the core principle. We do not want to lose affordable housing. We do not want to see families lose affordable housing. So we're starting with the same goal. We have an obligation, even though we all inherited this together, we have an obligation to do everything we can to fix it. I honestly do not know enough about how you could reach back to families who are no longer there. Well, I need to find out about that. But for the families who are there now, the commissioner is going to describe, let her speak to this, the commissioner is going to describe the actions we're going to take to help address the needs of those buildings, and literally anybody who's got a problem, the commissioner is going to be here at the end of the meeting to hear from each building to make sure we're following up with each one. So speak to the strategy we're going to use for the TIL buildings.
First, let me say that I know, and there are a number of residents in TIL buildings here tonight, that you have earned your right for homeownership and having been in buildings for a very long time. And the TIL program has taken too long, and it's because of that that we've made a number of changes because we know that we have to do more and that we have to do better. So let me describe them. The first is to ensure that we are moving as quickly as possible the TIL buildings through what many of you might know as the Affordable Neighborhood Cooperative Program, ANCP. Let me just, let me try to explain.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Everybody, look, hold on. Let me, let me step in. Everybody, listen. Commissioner is honestly trying to address a lot of stuff that was handed to all of us for a long time, and this is an earnest answer. I need you to listen to the answer. If you disagree with it, you're going to get to speak to her afterwards, but you've got to listen to the answer.
So through that program, we will be able to, working with partners, make the types of repairs, make the types of investments to rehabilitate buildings that have had building conditions for a long time. We are accelerating that, thanks to the mayor, additional capital funding to make sure that program moves more quickly. I also know, however, that there are building conditions today in TIL buildings that need to be fixed. So we have started, and we've gone through the vast majority of buildings, roof-to-cellar inspections, and we will make those emergency repairs because while the buildings are going through the program, we know that we need to deal with conditions. The third thing that I'll mention is that we have taken on utility costs because for each of the TIL buildings, there are a couple more that just have to get finalized, but we know that will be a lift for tenants. And then we have also created a new program because we've also heard that the 2,500 purchase price is too high, right? And so we have created a new program, a purchase savings plan, that essentially says that through the construction period, the rent that you are otherwise paying will be set aside so that goes towards the 2,500 purchase price so that you are paying less. Having said that, I know each building is different. I will be more than happy to talk about the specifics, and we also have a table with representatives from NHS and from HPD here to the extent that you want the very, very latest on the building. And just to sum up, I know it's been a long and hard struggle for residents of TIL buildings. My commitment, however, is to, is to as quickly as possible, turn the tide so that your right for affordable homeownership is one that we make good on.
Right here in the front.
Hello. My name is Vi Higginson. I'm the executive director of the Mama Foundation for the Arts and the home of Mama I Want to Sing. I heard most recently that you had an initiative or a commission about the arts and its disparities, and I want to know more about it, and I want to know about the timing and how the Mama Foundation for the Arts can be included.
Thank you very, very much. So what I'm going to do is, we'll do a follow-up. I want our Commissioner for Cultural Affairs, Tom Finkelpearl, to talk to you directly. I don't think he's here tonight, but I want to have him speak to you directly about. But here's the bottom line on the cultural plan, which you referenced. The cultural plan simply says that unlike the history in which so often with cultural funding, the rich got richer, and the concept of cultural funding was narrow geographically, demographically, et cetera, the cultural plan creates a framework for really spreading cultural funding to large and small organizations, community-based organizations, all five boroughs, all neighborhoods, and puts a focus also on our cultural institutions having diverse audiences and diverse staffs. So that's the essence of the plan, but I'll have the commissioner go over it with you. Thank you. Thank you.
My name is June Brockston, and I'm a homeowner here in Harlem. I'm just going to piggyback on this whole sanitation thing. When I got my home, they did not tell me that I would be sweeping the streets for sanitation. I'm not understanding why we need alternate side of the street parking if you're going to have me sweep 18 inches into the street. I have asthma, I have allergies, and I have no place to put my broom once I sweep the nasty street where people with their dogs do not pick up their crap. And, um, who's responsible for the signs that are no longer visible about curb your dog? There used to be curb your dog signs everywhere. Nobody's responsible. I called sanitation, they said it wasn't them, the police said it's not them. Who's responsible for this? I don't think it's fair that I'm being picked on in my neighborhood and getting, giving summonses of $125 for not sweeping 18 inches into the street. I don't own that street.
Okay, we got you. Thank you. Commissioner?
Right, so, so it is the requirement of every property owner in the city of New York to sweep their sidewalk and 18 inches into the street during two hours every day. Not for the whole day, we ask that two hours every day, and that, that routing time is provided to everyone, so you know when you have to have it actually cleaned. That is a rule across the city. There's also a rule that you are supposed to be picking up after your dog, both of which are these things we attempt to enforce. Enforcing the pooper-scooper law is more difficult. The signs were taken down by DOT as part of an effort to declutter the street, because they did not think that people didn't know that they were supposed to pick up after their dog. They thought they just were not complying, so they didn't think the signage necessarily was educational in that respect. So, in order, that was sort of a, an attempt to declutter. So those are the two things, but we--
So let me, let me speak to your point, because I think it's a very fair point. So I'm a homeowner, I'm a, the same law applies to me. I have, as a citizen, I've had trouble understanding the logic myself. So, this is the law all over the city. I don't think, honestly, it is a law that gets, meaning on the 18 inches, I don't think it's one that is one of the most aggressively enforced laws. I'm concerned that you've had the kind of enforcement you've had. So here's where we're going to start. Commissioner's going to see you afterwards, because it also could indicate an enforcement pattern that is not consistent, and that would be a problem, for, that would be something we do not want to see. So Commissioner, knowing that the enforcement on the 18 inches is not ubiquitous, because it can't be, I want you to look at this individual's history, see if there's been something that's maybe been too strenuous there, and if there's anything that needs to be adjusted. On the bigger issue, I think we have to have a conversation with the City Council about that 18 inches law and what makes sense for the future. And on the, on the question of the pooper-scooper law, look, we, I've thought about whether we want to go back and do a major enforcement effort again. It would be, it would be a big deal, it would be costly, that's something we have to consider. So I'm, I'm just saying, I'm thinking about it, I know--
The woman in the white shirt with the earrings.
Hi, thank you.
Question, question.
Yeah, it's really quick. Actually, you said that you don't have any information about the housing, now warehouse and has? I have a lot of information here. It's been reviewed, if I can give it to you, and then that's it. Thank you. It's been reviewed by several councils. Can I give it to you?
That's fine.
And that's it, thank you.
What do you got?
All the information here.
She's done. The woman in the white--
Oh, about, this is about the legislation?
Yes.
Thank you.
The woman in the white can just--
She has to turn around so I can thank her. Tap her, please. Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for having me.
You're welcome.
I'm speaking, my name is Renee Harrison, I'm speaking for all the NYCHA residents. NYCHA, okay? I've been residing in NYCHA for 42 years. I'm a military mom, my child is serving, 82nd Airborne. I've come to now have new managerial taken over in the last two years, so that means I was there 40 years. I'm now being labeled as an undesirable, I was on your executive board for two tenures. I've watched mismanagement, I've watched everything that went under the sun. Mr. Mayor, I tried to contact with you personally, so that we could have a sit-down and talk. I've now been brought upon these frivolous charges at 250 Broadway--
What's your question?
--which I am fighting, okay? I'm an upstanding tenant.
Give you a question.
My question is, you're messing with residents that follow the rules and regs, don't owe any rent arrears, just upstanding tenants. And then you have warehouse apartments with supplies in them, where people should be living. But you're picking on me, want me gone, out of my unit.
I appreciate the concern. I don't know the specifics.
My question is--
I'd like the Chair, I'd like the Chair to speak--
You were given some papers at Antioch Baptist Church, previous, a couple of weeks back. Did you look at these manifesto papers? Yes or no?
A few weeks ago at Antioch?
At Antioch Baptist Church, at your town hall meeting we had, uh, what was that, in May?
Oh, a few months ago, May?
Yes, a couple of weeks back.
Yeah, I cannot remember that exact paper, it's my apology, but let me have the Chair speak to--
Yes, good evening, Chair.
Good evening, nice to see you.
Yes, how are you?
So, we should talk, and we have folks here to talk offline about the ongoing issues that I know we have. Your broader point about our need to focus on the broader issues, I just want to say, because of the mayor's investment, we've actually brought on a number of apartments back online to not only, to put them back into productive use. We did not have resources, et cetera, to do that. So, if there are the units that you see, I can guarantee you are in the queue to be how, to be the homes of, of future residents. So that has been a major focus for us. Offline, we can talk about your specific tenancy issue.
Good evening, thanks for coming, Mr. Mayor. My name is Brad Taylor, I'm with the Friends of Morningside Park, and I wanted to bring up a, a sort of issue that I know is important to you, which is parks equity.
Yes.
And, you know, all over the city, we love our local parks. In Harlem, we certainly use them, we love them, and we use them well. But, but there is an issue with resources, and our, our local elected officials and Councilman of Perkins and--
Okay, just help me with the question, because we're trying, we got a lot of people go to. What's the question, sir?
So the question is, the allocation of PEP officers within the system. So, a, as I understand it, there's a local park here that gets a contribution from a local institution, has four PEP officers in two acres. Morningside Park, for instance, 30 acres, has zero dedicated PEP officers.
Okay, I appreciate it. So you're, you're asking to make sure there's equity in how those are distributed?
Exactly.
So this is, and by the way, I want to say, PEP and the PEP officers and NYPD work together. So, parks can give the first answer, but in terms of that park, NYPD might want to add about what its efforts have been to keep safety and security.
Right, we have a captain, two sergeants, and seven officers who patrol Morningside Park and the northern parks, north of 110th Street. So, how many acres, I don't know exactly, but it's, it's a lot of large parks. It's always good to have more resources, but they are able to patrol those parks and address things. And we work very closely with the inspector from the 26th precinct and the 28th spring, and they've done a, a fine job, but I know you very well, we talk, we have monthly meetings with you, and happy to continue that and work together to improve things.
Gentlemen in the front here, right, yeah.
Good evening, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Good evening, thank you for having me tonight. I'm Deputy Inspector Barris, the commanding officer of the 26th. I work together with Commissioner Castro, and in conjunction to his PEP officer in the Park Department. We also have resources, we have eight cops and bikes and one sergeant, and every weekend. We also have the scooter guys in the park, we have about eight scooter, also have mountain in the park. And in conjunction to that, I also have a group of four and one sergeant in the park as well. My conditions team is in the park, so that amounts to about 24 cops on any given weekend. And we are, we work with the department, and, you know, we have a lot of resources in the park.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor de Blasio. My name is Reverend James E. Booker Jr. I'm the pastor of St. John African Methodist Episcopal Church here in the heart of Harlem. And, right next to our church, our property, is a empty lot owned by HPD. It's been empty for the past 16 years that I've pastored that church. And, we have made several inquiries about what is going to be done with that lot, because right now, it's just being used for dog and human waste and other things, rats, and it's, and we have the means, and we're willing, if we have the opportunity, to do something with that, along with our church, to try to bring more low-income housing to our community. But we've been, it's been very difficult for us to get any real response for, to our inquiries.
Reverend, Reverend, thank you for raising this very much, and I'm going to, again, the, our Housing Commissioner is very popular tonight, but I'm going to ask the Commissioner to give a quick answer, but then to also sit down and meet with you directly, because we'd certainly love to see that happen if it can. Do you know about the site, or do you just want to do a follow-up? She'll follow up with you directly and sit down with you. Thank you very much, Reverend. Come on, it's lottery time.
Good evening, Mr.--
Hi, there you go.
Mayor, thank you, I'm Mr. Perkins.
Okay, everyone, just, I'm sorry, one second. Everybody, we got, because we're starting to run out of time, so quick questions, and I'll try and give quick answers. Go ahead.
I've lived in Harlem for about 20 years. My question is about roadblocks that are put in the way of those who want to become teachers in New York City. In particular, New York State, once again, determines who gets certified to become a teacher in New York City schools. So on May 1st, 2014, they, they determined that new requirements should be kicked in. I graduated from an accredited program on May, in May 2012.
Okay, I'm not going to stop you on purpose, just because there's so many things. Are you trying to become a New York City public school teacher?
Yeah. So my question is--
So I just may say, the Chancellor's, Deputy Chancellor's going to see you directly after, this is the First Deputy Chancellor, so she's in a good position to follow up on your personal situation. Is you have a broader question, or is it just about your situation?
There's really a broader question here, in that there are many, many, many teachers, people who would like to become teachers, in particular minority--
Yes.
--people who want to become teachers, but, and we go through tremendous emotional and financial pain--
Thank you.
--to become teachers, and then we do not have the resources after these changes are made without any grandfather--
So, so just to speak to the bigger point, so we'll have the Deputy Chancellor speak to this right here for one second.
The woman right there in the--
Hold on, hold on, we're not done.
Okay.
She will talk to you about your trajectory and trying to see how we can help you get into our system, but to the bigger point, Deputy Chancellor, we know we are putting a lot of resources into trying to make sure there are more teachers of color, and I will say specifically, there's a deep concern about young men of color becoming teachers to have role models of all backgrounds. But for applicants of color, what can we do to make sure people are having every opportunity?
Absolutely, you do need the licensing piece first from the state, and we do work with that, but we do have a recruiting office in, in the Department of Education, and I will work with you to figure out where the blocks are. But we want more teachers of color to come into our school system. So people like you who come here, we want you here, so I have to figure out what's wrong and why that's not happening, but we'll work through this with you. Thank you.
Right there, right, yeah, woman, yeah. Just question.
So, this question's for Mayor de Blasio. So I, I hear a lot of talk about it's a state's responsibility that, on issues that affects New York City residents, but there's a, a lack of leadership effort on the local level to, to ensure, to hold these people accountable, to making sure that the, the needs are being addressed. So I'm interested to know, why do you think you deserve the people's vote for reelection? And if you, and if elected, what would be your accountability plan to have community input on any city policy proposal plan that has transparency with the city agency, your constituents, and elected official?
Thank you, thank you for the question. I'm not, I'll just say honestly, I'm not going to give you the answer to the political part of the question. This is not a setting to talk about reelection, but I do want to get to the accountability part of the question. And look, when we say, let's recognize what's the responsibility of the state of New York or the federal government versus the city, that is to say, what we can control versus what we can't control. And I want to be very clear about that. If you had a concern tonight about policing, if you had a concern about sanitation, if you had a concern about schools, those are things we control and we can do a lot to address concerns and problems. If something is run by the state of New York, of course we're going to advocate for the change. We'll go at them, we'll, we'll bring public pressure, we'll work with the state legislators, we do that all the time. I don't want to suggest to you that that always works, just because we do powerful advocacy, that the state always changes its mind. One of the problems of the state government being 150 miles away is there's often a lack of understanding of what life is like here in the city and what people are going through. But, my point in that is, I just want people to understand that which their city government can control versus the things we have to fight to change at the state level. Thank, thank you, I gotta keep going. Thank you.
Peace and blessings, family, and I want to thank you, Mayor de Blasio, for Cure Violence. My name is Ayesha Sekou. We've met and talked before. We are one of the most recent recipients of the Cure Violence Contract out of the mayor's office on criminal justice. We're happy to have Eric Cumberbatch, who has supported us wholeheartedly. We have wraparound services with Jackie Row Adams. We're getting support from Gail, Ms. Gail Brewer, Manhattan Borough President, to clean up the park in our catchment area, which is a park, the question is coming, but what's important that people don't understand, we have the parks people here, and I waited, I waited, from the beginning.
Okay, okay.
So, one of the things, one of the issues is, within our catchment area, we are commissioned to reduce and de-escalate violence--
Yes.
--in a, in a particular hardened area where shooting occurs, because we have not talked about gun violence the entire evening. And so I'm grateful, and I have to say this while these folks who helped me are here, that we have helped with the park where shooting has happened on both sides of that park for the last five years, most of the shooting in Harlem. That's 139th, 140th, so I want to thank the Commissioner and thank Manhattan Borough President Gail Brewer for that, and definitely thank you and your team for the work that you're doing. But I also have to say, we have 276 days with no one shot in our catchment area. My whole team is here, stand up. Some of them have left, our young people have left, but we have to honor the work that's been done around Cure Violence. And so my question to you is, one, we have young people that we see all the time, we work with the highest risk, and the services that they need are more extensive than we have right now.
Right.
And what we have, we love, but what we're seeing is that we need more mental health work, and so that's why I'm taking my time to make sure we get through it.
I got, I got--
Young people are suffering in a big way.
Thank you, and there's a lot of other people waiting, so I want to answer this. Thank you very much. I believe, thank you for everything you said, but I want to say back to you and congratulate everyone who's a part of this movement, because it's amazing the success that is being achieved in reducing violence, and that success has to come from the community. That's the power of this movement. Eric Cumberbatch, you mentioned, is doing a fabulous job working with the Cure Violence Movement all over the city. I am very comfortable saying to you, we want to connect more city services through the Cure Violence Initiative. So one of the things we've talked about, for example, going forward, is that the Cure Violence Movement on each neighborhood would have more access to giving young people summer jobs, for example. And obviously also, mental health services. So Eric, I charge you to get together with Sherlaine's team in terms of how we can take the Thrive NYC services and connect them to Cure Violence. Thank you very much.
Woman in the white, right back there, white shirt. Hold on, get the mic, hold on.
Sorry. Recently I was in a meeting with City Councilman Bill Perkins, and we had some students that tell us that there was gambling, drinking, sex, selling of drugs, and using drugs in our middle school and high school. Mr. Mayor, could you please have a town hall meeting with just the young peoples in the middle schools and the high schools, so they can tell you directly themselves the problems that's going on in the system? And they maybe can give you some solutions? We need to hear from our young people more--
Thank you.
--and less from everybody else.
Yes. So, I will be very happy, the next few months are going to be a little busy, but after that, I would be happy to do a town hall meeting exclusively from all over the city for middle school kids and high school kids. I think that's a great idea. Thank you very, very much for that. Thank you. Let me also note, let me just note, it is 9:30, it's approximately 9:30. You got me till 10 o'clock, so the faster the questions, the faster the answers, we You got me till 10 o'clock, so the faster the questions, the faster the answers, we can get to a lot of people.
Thank you, oh, thank you so much, thank you.
Quick question, quick answer, let's go.
Yes, Mayor, I'm just reading...
Wait, wait.
Hi, good afternoon, glad to see you. My name is Elizabeth Abraham, thank you, appreciate.
Go ahead.
My question is, in your travel to Puerto Rico and understanding the economical crisis and the renewal economic capitalism procedures is occurring in Puerto Rico, my question is coming, how can your administration can help the people of the liberation thanks themselves and reawaken?
How can we help Puerto Rico tonight? Can I summarize it? Yeah.
Please.
Look, very quickly, Puerto Rico's being put through a horrible crisis. Federal policies helped create the crisis, there's a very limited response from Washington, healthcare crisis, budget crisis, Zika crisis. I'm working with some of the members of Congress, including Congresswoman Velazquez, Congressman Serrano, to try and change the current federal policy. It's gonna be tough, you know what's going on in Washington, but I will work with them to change that policy and also see any way the city of New York can be of direct support to the people of Puerto Rico. I gotta keep going, but thank you.
Hi, my name is Kyra Keen.
Question.
Okay, the question is, so there's a lot of hard-working people who are not able to afford housing, hard-working.
Yes.
There is a problem of trash and filth and litter all over the streets, there's a problem of homelessness and finding shelter. So morale production, from my observation, production is the basis of morale. The more someone produces, the more able and capable, more self-respect they have.
Okay, question.
There's some kind of program that can be done where the homeless who are willing to be in a homeless shelter can help pick up the trash on the street and be productive.
And that does exist, and it's something we've been supporting the expansion of. It actually does exist in the city, it has been very productive. As you know, some people are in a position to do something like that, some other folks who are homeless have mental health challenges and other challenges, it may not make that possible. But yes, it is a good model, it's working, and we're gonna expand it. Go ahead.
Over there, pick somebody with their gun, as soon as you send me more referrals.
Good evening, Harlem, thank you, Mayor. Nice to see you. Okay, so we've been talking about the alcohol situation with young people, what about sex trafficking? Do you guys know that there's sex trafficking going on right in our neighborhood? My daughter, who had developmental delays, was unfortunately a victim. I'm doing something about it, I'm talking, I joined Reverend Q English's organization, I'm actually the co-chair of the Manhattan Task Force, and thanks to the 28 precinct, you guys definitely helped to rescue my daughter. She was found just next door to where Bill Perkins lives. It's all around us, what can we do? What I found, Mayor, is that when ACS came to my house, because she was disappearing, when the Board of Education knew that she was in special ed, guess what? No one ever said she was involved in sex trafficking. If they had just even mentioned the word, my approach, my diligence, my parenting skills, everything would have been on another, you know, level.
Right, thank you.
I think we need to train the DOE, ACS, everybody, teachers, they all need to know that when a young person's missing, they're not just being promiscuous.
Yeah, I got you, and thank you, thank you, you made a very, very powerful point and thank you for the fact that you are raising your voice and it helps. I can simply say, that's something I wanna bring back to those agencies, that we have to sensitize everyone who works with parents to the fact that, in fact, that might be what's going on, so thank you.
The woman right there, but make it a question, and it has to be fast.
Good evening, my name is Fatu. We know Harlem being a historic place for decades, is it any reason they wanna change the name?
Change the name? You mean the, the real estate brokers?
They wanna change Harlem name to Soha or something like that.
So, thank you for the question, thank you. No, there's no reason except greed, and I've said very publicly, I think it's idiotic to change the name of a, I'm gonna say it again. Let me state to everyone, Harlem is a legendary, proud community, the name Harlem is all you need, so, sorry, real estate brokers.
Hi, Mayor de Blasio, I think one of the great singular achievements has been your making New York a smart city and supporting tech entrepreneurship to the extent that you have. Harlem Garage, which is an incubator here in Harlem, no longer exists. We don't have a city-sponsored tech footprint here, is there any consideration of making Mart 125, which has also been kind of abandoned for years, as a replacement for that? Because we do wanna be part of the global economy and the digital age.
Thank you for the question, absolutely, to the broad point, the vision of a growing tech community in this city is about 350,000 jobs and we expect it to grow, is we want it to be five borough, and we want it to be all over each borough, because we see tremendous possibility. So I can't speak to a specific building, but I can say, yes, we want to see the growth of the industry in Harlem. I'd like our folks to follow up, and I don't, do we have anyone from EDC? Yes, okay, or from which agency? EDC, you'll follow up, and let's see if that, that's a really good idea, I think. Follow up, thank you.
Someone right here in the, yep, blue, yep. Yep.
There you go.
Good evening, Mayor, my name is James Baldwin. I talked to you a couple of months ago, and my question is to you, how are you working on the homeless situation in New York? Because I feel like...
Say, say it again?
What are you doing to make the homeless situation in New York better? Because I'm a homeless youth myself, and I got into like a big incident with DHS, and I've been out the shelter system for a while, going back and forth with family members, because I refused to go back inside the shelter system, because they tried to transfer me to a Mecca site, tried to tell me I have psychological problems with me, because I told the director, I can't take him seriously because he's speaking to the wall. As a man, you're supposed to give me direct eye contact, where I learned coming up, as a young black male, when somebody's looking away from you, that means they lying, they trying to hide something from you. I'm getting tired of being sold Peter Pan dreams, oh, we're gonna help you, we're gonna help you, I work with people from your team, they've been giving me the runaround, and I'm getting sick and tired of it. It's getting to the point where I'm about to get everybody together that's homeless and knows about this situation and make an uprise to make America realize the light about homelessness in New York City, because this is ridiculous.
Thank you, thank you for the question. We're, we're trying to change a lot about the strategy, and just let me, hold on, everybody, hold on, we're still responding before, can't go to the next one until we respond, hold on one sec. I appreciate your story, and I remember meeting you before. I think the whole concept we're putting in place here is to try to make shelter more humane, to try and make it safer, to get people opportunity in a way that I don't think they've been given before. I know it's not perfect, and I know there's gonna be a lot of problems as we try and get to that point, but that is the goal, and we're gonna keep trying to do it. And I thank you.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Tyrone Ball, I'm TA President at St. Nicholas Houses. We have a few questions, one...
Sir, I gotta do one per person, I'm sorry, one standard, one per person.
All right, one question. With Next Generation NYCHA and the way things are developing, well, how is NYCHA gonna stand over the next coming years? And I see that you're putting new buildings and going on with something that the last mayor or administration was doing. How is it that you're gonna put old with new and not improve the existing infrastructure?
Okay, so we are improving the existing infrastructure. I wanna respond, we are. The last city budget, so you know for a long time, of course, the federal government, et cetera, they stopped investing in NYCHA. The city rarely did much to make up for that in any major way. In the budget passed in June, we put $1.3 billion into physical needs of NYCHA, roofs and repairs, fundamental stuff. Now, hold on now. One annual budget, we added $1.3 billion, and we intend to keep investing to do that fundamental infrastructure that you're talking about to begin with. I believe fundamentally that the development that's part of Next Generation NYCHA works because money goes back to the specific buildings in NYCHA surrounding any other development we do. So the concept here is, let's throw money off from that to the needs of the community, we're gonna have community members determine with us what those are, it might be security systems, roofs, whatever it might be. And I think that's one of the ways we bring revenue into NYCHA, because it's sure not coming from Washington, and we all know that's the fundamental reality, so that's why we believe in it.
Go ahead, over here.
Shalom to everybody, Mayor, thank you for having, coming here. My name is Beverly Pavone, and I'm from a TIL building. Our building has been in TIL since 1967, 1996, over almost 20 years. We have worked very hard to keep up with the program as it's been changing.
Yep.
The ANCP program is not a program that we signed up for.
Okay.
We originally had a program where...
So I can't get too much detail, what are you asking?
My question is, will you please fund the original TIL program as it was when we signed up for it in 1996, 95? All those buildings, it's 150, 50 buildings, 50 and Mr. Councilman Perkins.
I got it, I got it.
We need to have this funding, because we're not supposed to be paying for the rehab as ANCP programing, that's not what we signed up for.
Hold on, hold on, I appreciate the question very much. I'll, I'll tell you this, I can't give you a yes or no now, because I don't know enough about it, but here's what I will do. The Commissioner's made very clear that we're trying to work through building by building the situation. We do not wanna see people left and lurch, we do not wanna see people lose their affordable housing, we don't wanna lose the affordable housing for everyone. The question of would I refund, would I fund the 1996 plan, I do not know, but I will give it an honest look to see if it's something we could include in an upcoming budget or something like it. I do not know the answer, but the Commissioner will brief me, and then we'll respond to the community. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, thank you for this town hall meeting. I'm a big guy, my name is Reverend Vernon Williams, I'm a big guy on takeaways from meetings. And since I'm a Democrat and I, and I'm gonna vote Democratic, I wanted to ask you, because I heard what you said earlier, about a lot needs to be done, so I suspect that we're looking, looking towards the future to get a lot of things done. And I was wondering, the question to be, to you is this, would you consider from this meeting to put together a task force that would either work from precinct to precinct or from community board, that will work on the issues that were raised up in this room today, that people's needs can really be addressed? Because in reality, a lot of things, like housing, 40% increase in homelessness within your mayor's ship.
Go ahead, sir.
That, thus far, so my, again, my question is, would you consider forming a task force that will address the issues that have come up out of this town hall meeting?
Yeah.
As we go forward.
Thank you for the question. I don't think it is, my honest response is, I don't think a task force is what's gonna solve the problems, right behind you. Part of why we have this meeting is to hear directly from people and have all the Commissioners present who have to act on the problems, the elected officials who join me when we have to do something different in terms of legislation or the budget. So I actually think we're the task force, meaning we are listening to community concerns, and now it's our job to put them into action. That's what I think will get things done fast.
Right here in the white sweater, and yeah, you.
Hi, I'm William Rogers, or Randy Rogers, as some may know me. I'm the owner of Sisters Cuisine, it's a Caribbean and soul food restaurant that's been on 124th for 23 years now. I am a member of the New Harlem East Merchants Association, a, the head of partnership for Pass NYC.
Need to go to questions, there's a lot of people waiting.
Okay, well, I just want you to fully understand, I work with a number of city agencies, I'm very dedicated to this community, and one thing I've noticed, most recently at a meeting with the Harlem Commonwealth, was there's a dearth of conversation about the effects of commercial rent control on upcoming neighborhoods. It amounts to a, a situation that allows for the draining of wealth from black entrepreneurs, while at the same time, it spurs gentrification by raising the cost of living in the neighborhood.
You're saying, are you adverging that there be commercial rent control?
I think that there needs to be commercial rent control.
And so, thank you for the question.
But, but I think that you need to fully understand that it's not just...
No, sir, we got a lot of people, I'm not...
Okay, but, but if you're gonna give me, if you're gonna give me a...
I'm gonna give you an answer to the question of commercial rent.
But I haven't fully articulated the issue.
It's up to our moderators, if they want everyone to keep waiting.
But it's very clear, it's very clear that this issue isn't something you wanna address, anyone in this room?
Go ahead, I want your, go ahead.
Okay, because I've spoken to your office for over two years about this, and they've been able to do very little. Bill Perkins, I moderated an event during your election in which you committed to this being an issue for your tenure, and I've not heard anything from your office about this.
Go ahead.
Now, right now, it amounts to, to modern-day reverse redlining in the way that black businesses are squeezed financially by property owners, because there is no commercial rent control, they have a complete monopoly, they have a complete monopoly on suitable spaces, okay? Therefore, they have instituted predatory leasing practices in neighborhoods that were, that were the victims of predatory lending practices but a couple of years ago during the financial crisis. So I'd like to know what our representatives are doing to address this issue.
Okay. It's no lack of desire to answer your question, or no lack of understanding what you're saying. I, I don't mean this in any way to belittle the thing you've just described, I have heard the exact same concern from hundreds of merchants all over the city over the last decade. So the reason I was trying to cut to the quick is, I understand the problem. Now, here's the question, so far, I don't know about my colleagues, we have not found, I'm very sympathetic on commercial rent control, we have not found a legal construct that we believe would survive for a way the city of New York could act on commercial rent control. The state of New York controls residential rent control, there's no way in God's green earth, commercial rent control would ever get voted in Albany. So the question is, in a free enterprise system, and I say very openly, I have my own critique of the free enterprise system, but what can the city do within that construct regulatorily to have an impact? I don't have a good answer for you, not because I don't care, I don't have a good legal power or regulation to use to change the nature of the market, that is the honest truth. So, I'm just being truthful with you.
So my name is Greg Bishop, I'm the Commissioner of the Department of Small Business Services. In the construct that the Mayor just described, we have a number of services to help small businesses, including access to legal assistance, and working with council last year, they passed a commercial tenant harassment bill. So I'm gonna give you my card, and we'll have a conversation in terms of how we can help you.
Hi, thank you. So I've been here for a bit, people have mentioned, have quick questions, people have mentioned mental health, and in particular, the NYPD being the source of response. My question is, why doesn't New York City have a mobile crisis unit like Albany, Buffalo, and Rochester? These are New York State and city social workers that respond to...
We do.
So it's not just NYPD who is...
No, Commissioner, our Health Commissioner will describe, we have mobile crisis units we send out for mental health.
And then, for public school equity, you mentioned the graduate...
Wait, I'm sorry, you got one per person, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I should probably just talk to you directly, we have a whole series of outreach teams that can be deployed in various crisis situations, in various settings.
Is there a number that people can call for that?
Well, the number that...
The same one, 1-888-NYC. It's not the only one, it's the best one.
That's the gateway, that's why there is only one number. Somebody will talk to you and figure out what kind of response is needed, and there are a range of services available.
Great, thank you.
Okay, we're getting to be about 10 minutes left, everyone, just wanna warn you. Come on, Bill, make a choice. Okay, come on up. Come on over. Okay, I'm gonna borrow this chair from, no, that chair's stuck, that doesn't work, okay. Come on over. All right, I'm coming to you. Can I build a water park? Where do you want a water park? Where do you want a water park? Fifth Avenue, okay. Okay, this young lady, how, how old is she? How old is she? How old is this young lady?
Naya.
How old?
Six.
Six years old, and at a town hall meeting, I'm impressed. I don't think we can do a whole water park, even though it would be fun, but we can put in some things with water that you can play in, and that's pretty good. So we'll follow up, is that mom there?
Man in the back.
Okay, we'll follow up and figure out where we need more water things to play with.
Man in the back, go ahead.
Hi. My question is about HDFC co-ops, and specifically, the foreclosure threat that some buildings are facing.
Yeah.
Two months ago, at the West Harlem Progressive Democratic Association meeting, you promised to look into this issue with your staff and to put it off.
Yep.
Have you done that?
Yes. In fact, I had the conversation with the Commissioner right here, and she helped me to understand what's being done to address foreclosure in a way that protects the folks who live in the buildings. Please explain real quick.
Yes, so we have added an additional step in this process to allow HDFCs that are currently in the third-party transfer round to be able to address their issues. And so again, there's a table here, I will also be around. There are very concrete steps that you can take if you are in this round to come out of the process, and we'd be more than happy to help you.
My name is Catherine Nelves Nixon. Uh, no, don't say that. I am 96 years old.
Wow.
My concern is, one is a concern, and one is a question. The concern is, why is there no shelter on the street of Adam Clayton Powell on the uptown side?
You mean like a bus shelter, bus shelter?
A bus shelter, a bus shelter, a bus shelter, not a... Not at the other shelter.
Yeah.
A bus shelter. My concern, my question is, you see this walker? I have worn out three or four walkers. And the reason is, because when I cross the street, I'm trying to wait for the white man. That's what the sign is on the... When I go. And it takes so long, I mean, it's so short. Some places, it is 10 minutes, some places it is 25. I want to know, why is there a disparity? And my other concern is, these spots where the walker's supposed to go up the sidewalk is a pool of water. Now, like tonight, with all this rain, I guess I'll have to walk in the street, because I can't get across, because there's a puddle. Now, on 135th Street and Malcolm X Boulevard, right next to Clayton Apartments, there, the sidewalk to go cross the street is so bumpy, I have to go out in the middle of the street to get across to the other side.
There's...
So what is going on?
We're gonna work on this.
Are there no... Are there no inspectors?
I got you.
Listen, are there no inspectors? They should come out and find out. And some of these sidewalks are all broken up, they need to be repaired. But I want some service for the people of this city. I want service for everybody! We need service now!
Thank you. Sidewalks, I like that. Sidewalks for everybody. Sidewalks for everybody. We're gonna follow up, ma'am, we're gonna follow up on the things you raised. Thank you very, very much.
The gentleman in the blue, yeah.
Thank you very much, Mayor de Blasio. Thank you very much, Mayor de Blasio, for coming to Harlem. My name is John McBride, I'm an HDFC shareholder, I'm also with the HDFC Coalition. We have a lot of HDFC Coalition people in the house tonight.
Yes, sir.
We have TIL building people in the house tonight who want to become HDFC shareholders.
Yes, question, sir.
Here's one of our concerns, is that the proposal that's been pushed by the city, and I know we're engaging you, has really been done without the kind of analysis...
The legislative proposal? Is that what you mean?
On the city level.
Yeah, yeah.
And on the state level, which we're very concerned about, because that seems to be...
On the city right here, legislative proposal, you're talking about the one that's being discussed with the council.
Okay, right.
Okay.
So what people need, HDFC shareholders, are low-income, or moderate-income, the middle-income.
Come on, I keep moving, so what's the punchline?
So the same way you helped keep the rent stabilized costs down, the rent down, for those residents, we need to keep our buildings affordable for our residents. And the way to do that is to not threaten us with full real estate taxes unless we sign over control of our buildings.
Thank you, thank you.
And that, hold on, and that, because that's what's being proposed, and none of us are gonna stand for it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We are... My answer to you is, there is an ongoing process with the city council. The original proposal is being worked through, nothing is set in stone. We obviously want to figure out something that's fair and protects long-term affordability. So there's gonna be a lot more conversation with the Coalition and with the council members before there's any action. Sure. Okay, three minutes left, Mr. Perkins, three minutes.
Good evening. Good to see you, Bill. My name is Marvin Holland. My question, to get right to the point, is you're creating 100,000 good jobs...
Yes, sir.
As part of your plan. How could we make sure that the residents of Harlem benefit from that plan? We have one of the highest unemployment rates, particularly amongst young people, so I want to make sure people in Harlem can benefit from the plan you're creating.
Thank you, I agree with that, 100%. And the answer, Marvin, the answer has a lot to do with geography. We want to locate the jobs in communities, excuse me, all over the five boroughs. So for example, the question earlier about the tech community in Harlem, there's a great deal of opportunity to develop tech in Harlem, life sciences, and we've been looking at locations for life sciences, including East Harlem, film and television, these are the areas that are the high-paying sectors. We want to focus on literally locating those occupational opportunities in the community. Thank you for the question. Okay, we got three minutes left.
Three minutes left. Take a... Three minutes, three people, one minute apiece.
Okay, that's good, three people, that's good.
The opening of Whole Foods on 125th and Lenox has brought forth concerns from the community regarding gentrification and the over-commercialization of our historic community. What can you do to stop gentrification and protect Harlem and stop the over-commercialization of our neighborhood?
Okay, so that's two separate concepts, but I'm gonna say, I'll try and unify them. The way we protect the community is, what I talked about earlier, the things that will protect affordable housing. What we do is protect NICA, that's a huge part of the public housing, a huge part of Harlem. The Affordable Housing Plan, our Affordable Housing Plan has already created 4,500 affordable apartments in community boards nine and 10. They're either built or on the way. That's how we protect the historic nature of the community. The gentrification problem in terms of stores, I'm never gonna tell you that the public sector can reach in and tell store owners what kind of store to have or what kind of product to sell, that's not how it works. But if we make sure people in the community have affordable housing and the job opportunities we spoke about before, we can make sure people have an opportunity to build what they want in their own community and afford what they want in their own community. That's the basic plans.
Good evening, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
My name is Claude Holmes. I worked for DCAST for eight years, and I experienced retaliation and discrimination, and I'm looking, I'm asking for job reinstatement.
Okay, I don't know the case, obviously, but I'll be happy to have my team follow up with you.
Yes, appreciate that.
And I want to make sure one of the members of Team Paula will follow up. This is something that folks in the Law Department should hear about to follow up, okay?
Young woman in the back with the yellow.
This is the last one, last one.
Last question.
Last question of the evening.
Make it good.
And remember, for anyone whose question did not get answered, the commissioners will be here and available, feel free to come up and see them.
Okay, thank you, I feel like I just won the lottery.
There you go.
So my question is for both you and Ms. Brewer, as you guys are both a part of the uniform land use review procedure.
Yes.
And it's August 2nd, and which I believe today, your official declaration for rezoning in East Harlem is due. So my question is simple, what is the official declaration for rezoning in East Harlem? Is it yes to rezoning? Is it no with conditions to rezoning, which is basically a conditional yes? Or is it no with no conditions to rezoning, as the overwhelming turnout of community members that have flooded your community board meetings, your town hall that was shut